I call the meeting to order. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer at a time when we celebrate the freedom the people of our nation enjoy and expect. We ask for protection of all people, our military and our leaders. In times of concern, we ask for acceptance and love of all individuals as you have created us as equal. Let us move beyond hatred and discord and show respect to everyone. Make us the eyes and ears of the community so that we hear and see what is needed and let us make decisions that encourage us all to help one another. In your holy name we pray, amen. We are working with a new sound system tonight, so if you hear a few glitches or we get a little loud, we apologize. Special presentations to start with. July is Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Lisa, would you like to come forward?
Where are you getting around real well on that? I'm becoming an expert at it.
Would you like to read the proclamation?
Yeah, let me pull it up here. And while I'm reading it and pulling it up, I'd like to have my staff come up as well.
Sure. All your staff, come on up. Parks and Rec.
That's not all the staff. No, it's not all of them. It's all of them that's here, and I want to thank them for being here too because they have to work a lot of nights and weekends. This is the backbone of the recreation department. I know a lot of times I'm the face, but these are the guys and the lady that does the work. So whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Albemarle, North Carolina, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to the development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a space for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Albemarle, North Carolina recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore it be resolved by Albemarle City Council that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Albemarle, North Carolina.
Counsel, I entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate all you do, and I know you have another presentation later. If you wish to stay for that, we would love to have you. It's totally up to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your Honor, before we go to the approval of minutes, just a question. Public hearings are all scheduled for 6:30, is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there a way that we could do an announced delegation ahead of them? Or is it because the public hearings were set for 6:30, we need to keep them in that order? Or should I ask?
I'll defer that to Brett.
That's the attorney. Is that okay? If that's okay, Your Honor, I would ask that we do, we've got Inga Kennedy with W.K. Dixon is here, and I think she must, they may be going back to Raleigh, and I would, she's been here a while. I'd ask that we change the agenda and allow her to go first in front of those three if it's not going to take her very long.
Set it in form of motion.
It is.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Kennedy, you want to come to the podium? Inga Kennedy, Public Engagement Consultant with W.K. Dixon.
I guess I should have told you I was going to do that, but we don't know how long the public hearings will last, and I would like to get you back on the road.
I'm a former planning commission chair.
Mayor, counsel, most of you have already met Inga Kennedy with W.K. Dixon. She's the public outreach person for our stormwater management program. Tom Murray is here today as well. They have finally completed a meeting, each one of you individually. I do appreciate each one of you taking time out of your busy schedules to meet with them, but Inga's here tonight to talk with you a little bit about the public outreach aspect that they are getting ready to kick off here in the city of Albemarle. So I think I'll turn it over.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and I have a loud voice, and you talked about your new system, so if I get too loud, just tell me to calm down or bring it down a little bit. Thank you again, and it's good to meet all of you in person. And we wanted to spend some time this evening with you to capture some of the upcoming outreach that we're about to kick off for our stormwater management plan. We've had a lot of input from not only you, but from staff and from checking other sources of information for communications. And one of the things that we want to make sure that we're focusing on as we move through this process over the next couple of months, although our outreach process will continue throughout the life of the process, is to focus on education, focus on awareness, and also on input. This is going to be a two-way communications process. We want to not only provide information but receive information, and so we are going to conduct it in that process. I've been around for a long time, and when I started as a planner and moved into the community engagement process, we didn't have a lot of tools to, at our disposal. And so we were kind of relegated to putting things in the legal notices section of the newspaper, and if someone saw something, they'd see it, and then we'd move on. But now we have lots of communication tools at our disposal, and we are going to use all of these tools, or as many tools as possible, to get through this process and to make sure that all segments of the Albemarle population are made aware and have the opportunity to provide us input. Many of these tools you have shared with us and confirmed that they would work and that we should conduct here in the area. We are going to start over the next week or so with our press releases to local and social media. We'll use the local newspaper and your social media processes, the city's processes, as well as any other organization that might have social media access. We'll provide, we have a webpage that is going live, as well as a dedicated email address, so all comments and questions can be funneled into one location. We want to set up a live interview or interviews with the WSPC radio so we can have some live information and discussions for people to hear, and perhaps they can call in and ask questions and get information. We've prepared a fact sheet, and we will also prepare frequently asked questions for the information that will go out before the public, just to keep them aware and to make sure that we are addressing issues of concern to them. Again, we talked about the social media posts, and social media is growing as a tool, and we want to make sure that we are using it to the best of our opportunity because the young people are using the social media as much as some of us, but we want to make sure that we get information out to them as well. To make sure that we have visuals, we're going to have a short educational video that we will develop and perhaps update as the process goes on. I'm going to share with you shortly our participation in local events to administer a survey and to have in-person discussions, and then we like to use your utility bill stuffer, particularly when we start doing our more formal and traditional meetings. And so all of these tools will be used to kick off our campaign and to keep it going. And it's important that once we get started, that our outreach is ongoing and that we are responsive to the public as they are providing input to us. Want to share some of the upcoming events and activities that we are going to kick off and begin this month, actually. We'll have our press release again with our social media and local media. We're also going to coordinate an interview with the radio station, but here's where we really get a lot of good information. It's when we are out in person with the people, when we go to where they are. So the city, the staff has provided a list of events that are coming up, and we're going to coordinate our schedules around these events. This is not cast in concrete, meaning that we have opportunities to add additional events, but these are some events that are coming up that we think will work well with what we are trying to convey. The farmer's market on Saturday, July 31st, the food truck Friday seems or sounds like it's a good event. We want to have or attend the back-to-school bash at the Waddell Center. We really, when we've worked with communities, have a lot of good feedback and receive good feedback with the back-to-school events. I don't have, I have a placeholder for the Labor Day weekend. I don't have an event, but that's always a good weekend that is available and people are out and about, so if you can think of something, let us know of anything that might be happening on Labor Day. If not, I'll plan to show up at some places of worship, and we've had that discussion with some of you, that places of worship are a lot of, are good places to provide information. A couple of you have suggested, and we'll do another food truck Friday, a couple of you have suggested the Rotary Club. We definitely want to make sure that we are getting to our business organizations and to our businesses. And then as we move into September and October, we'll start our more formal public meeting process. I do want to reiterate that this is not an exhaustive list, and so if there are things that are coming up that you're aware of, that we may not be privy to, but you think would work well for us to connect with the community, please let us know. And if you're wondering what we're going to be doing at these events, what we're going to be doing is we'll have a city map where, that's enlarged, that we can have the public come up and identify location-specific, specific locations of where they might be having issues or where they'd like for us to check into or check on. We'll have our survey, and we'll be able to do that both in hard copy and online, as well as a fact sheet that will, that they can take away and have access to the information regarding the webpage and our email. And so we want to make sure that we are having some face-to-face discussions in these in-person events and also get information back from them. So we'll be doing that, and you'll be hearing and seeing us a lot over the next few months, and we look forward to working with you. And as I always tell our technical team, and I'm telling you as well, everybody is a part of the public engagement team. And so we'll look to you also to help us get this information out to the public and to make sure that every segment is aware of what we're doing and how we're doing it and how they can be a part of it. So that's my presentation for tonight, and you'll be hearing from us, and I'll, I can answer any questions or...
Do you have a card with you? Or if not, will you contact Mr. Whitley? He is with Rotary Club, he can help you get that scheduled.
Oh, I will, I will. And I'm glad that you mentioned that. Nikki and Ross will be our conduit, so I'll make sure that we reach out. We definitely want to do that, though.
You need to get that scheduled because they're scheduling.
Yes, that's right, that's right. We work with a lot of Rotary Clubs, and while they are very open to receiving visitors, they do get filled up quickly, so we do want to do that.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
Safe travels back to Raleigh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We look forward to it, and you'll be hearing from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, approval of minutes. Consider approval of the May 19th, 2021 special meeting and the June 7th regular and closed meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We'll move into our public hearings. Ordinance 2118 renaming Rebel Road to Salvation Way. This is a public hearing that was held open from the last meeting. We asked the church and another property owner to see if they could come to an agreement on a possible name, and my understanding is there was no agreement, but I think Ms. Olinger is here tonight. Do you care to speak? Do you wish to speak?
Yes, please.
Come on up.
Okay, I'm Linda Olinger, 49554 Woodland Drive, Norwood, 28128, and I represent the adjacent property owners to the church around what used to be called Rebel Road and is no longer. I represent myself and my siblings, Maria, who cares for her husband who has dementia, my brother Hap, who's working in Rocky Mount, and my sister Harriet, who's working in Greensboro. So we're all here in me today. So this is a follow-up to the June meeting. At our last meeting, we established that with Albemarle City Council and our mother, Emily Willer Turner, worked together to close Rebel Road as a through street because it was considered a potential safety issue for the growing community, and it would become a cul-de-sac, and that is attached to the deed in 1999, the agreement that was made that closed it as a through street and turned it into a cul-de-sac. So I'm reading a statement from my sister who couldn't be here, of which we are in accord, and then I have a couple more things to say. I won't keep you long because I know we were here last time a good bit. At the June city council meeting, the council members approved determining a mutually agreeable new name for Rebel Road to be created in collaboration between cross-community elders and the Turner family to be presented at this meeting. The pastor, Jeff Williams, and three representatives of the Turners met outside, and we made arrangements to work together through email. The Turners then presented two choices to the elders who were going to meet separately, Old Farm or Townsend. Both of those were based on the location of the land and its historic value, but didn't have anything to do with our surname or their name. The elders were not in agreement with either one of those. Then, as shared in the email chain, Harriet has forwarded to the council members for which she had email addresses, Jeff Williams, as a representative of the church, declined further collaboration or discussion, and stated if we did not agree with changing it to Community Lane or other suffix, the council should name the road. So that's where it's been left. Renaming the road Community is not a viable choice for our property location because it's an identifier directly connected to the church. If the name is to be changed, we ask that the city council choose a neutral name, not associated with either landholder, which has been our request all along. The road should be named something agreeable to both parties and, of course, the city council or whoever's naming it. So additional information, our 22-plus acres have been listed with Christie Bogal of Larry McGuire Realty, July the 5th. We've had some active interest in it at this time. We're very glad about that. We need access to the road to our land. Our agent and potential buyers need access to that road, which is a public road once again, and prospective buyers need to understand it's not a driveway to a church. We ask the city council, please, to remind the church to remove all signage currently blocking the public road. Again, it makes it look like a driveway to a church. Now, I just went before this meeting, took a couple pictures, and sent them to the council members that I could find addresses for, and some of you may not have it, but basically they have their signed future home of on the road that blocks the lane when you're exiting the road. Again, we hope that the city council will choose a neutral name, not associated with either party, as was consistent with our mother's wishes in 1999, to work with the community, to still have access to the road, but to, so that safety issues would not come in.
Counsel, have a question, Ms. Olinger.
Now, just to clarify, you mentioned that the road was not accessible, your land is not accessible. I was by there today, too. The sign the church has is only blocking part of that road, correct? I mean, you can still get around, your realtor can still get around to see property.
It's blocking the road, the left-hand portion of the road. So if you go to our property and come back, you can't actually make a right at the stop sign because the sign is covering half of the road.
Councilmember Aldridge, I'll add to that, that when we opened the road and removed the barricades that the city had had there for probably two decades, we've asked the church to remove their sign. So we'll follow up with the church again if they have not, and it sounds like they haven't.
No, they have not.
Further questions?
They consider it their driveway.
But today we're here on a public hearing about name.
For the road, yes. Further questions, Ms. Olinger? Anyone else care to speak? Oh, okay.
You mentioned that you do have the property listed. How long has it been on the market?
Since July the 5th.
My thoughts are, if you're going to sell the property, maybe we need to talk to the people that are going to buy it. It seems like every time we turn around, we're running into another roadblock to try to satisfy two groups of people, and I would like, if it's going to happen, I'd rather see the parties involved making that decision, doing something now. Not that it would impede the sale of your property, but personally, if it were me and I was looking at it, I'd like to have that opportunity to give my feedback on it.
Mr. Dry, I understand what you're saying. The trouble is the road signs have been removed, so there's no understanding of it being a road. You know, there's no, there's no visual street sign anymore, and so that makes it incumbent upon us to, we are hoping that you will name the street tomorrow and put a street sign up.
Yes, we name it tomorrow.
Well, so just a question to follow up on Benton's comment. Is there, has the street sign been taken down, Kevin, or was there ever one down there?
There was one.
I thought there was one there. Is it? Because I don't see it on this.
It was removed.
Is it?
I don't, was the street sign removed?
It's been removed for a long time.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it there, but I can't say for sure.
We actually have pictures of it. When we had the first meeting, the first meeting we were notified of, I went over and took pictures. It was there then, but when our meeting came June, June, it had been removed.
I thought there had been.
In the very recent past.
So the sign that's in the right-of-way there, we were trying to give him a chance to remove it, and LA actually spoke with them earlier today, and they are going to be removing that, moving that out. We're going to show them where they can move it to outside of the right-of-way and out of the street there. We did have some interested, an interested party there, but I can't say whether or not they're going to move on it or not, but they were looking at purchasing the western portion of that, of that land over there on either side of Rebel Road.
Your Honor, we need to close the public.
No, no, I need to first see if anybody else cares to speak for or against.
And before the motion comes to close the public hearing, we kept it open last meeting to tonight, asking that the two parties talk.
Exactly right.
I'm going, Dreen, and I understand you need, there needs to be some way to get in there to show the property or tell people where the property is, okay? But I'm almost on the opinion that we wait and see if it, I mean, if we can find whoever buys the property to have some input, because I would much rather have something, have folks agree on what we're doing instead of cramming something. And I, right now, I just feel like it's going to be...
I'm not interested in changing it.
Well, I'm interested in changing it.
Change it, but...
Yes, but I'm interested in changing it, but I just wonder if we leave it open and see what another month does. I mean, in another month, they may have sold the property, okay? If you already have had folks and you've only had it on the market a week, oh my goodness. So before a motion is on the table to close it, I'm wondering if we want to leave it open. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion or anything else.
Every time we delay this, is it costing the city money to re-advertise the public hearing?
We don't have to re-advertise. We have to, we have to advertise the initial hearing. Excuse me. When you continue it from an open meeting, we don't have to re-advertise.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? Counsel, what's your wishes?
I would offer that we leave it open, and I hate doing it, just dragging it, but we've heard, and we've heard from the church, I would just prefer to leave it open until the August 2nd meeting, and, or maybe even put it out until September 6th or whatever that meeting is. I'm just looking to see when that meeting ends now.
Move it out to September to give a case.
They do sell it.
It's the right thing to do.
September 7.
For the folks that may, to have an opportunity to have input into that.
I just think it's much cleaner that way. At least that's the way I feel about it. So I'd place a motion on the table that would not supersede anything, it's just the first one on the table to hold it open again until September 7.
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
I think they should stress the urgency of coming together in agreement.
And to the Turner's.
Maybe.
And to the Turners, I think you heard our manager say, and, and our planning director say that the sign is going to be moved.
Ordinance 2125, consider a map amendment of the Northeast Connector property. This is a public hearing also, and we'll start with staff's introduction.
And to the Turner's.
And to the Turner's, I think you heard our manager say,
and our planning director say, that the sign is going to be moved.
Ordinance 2125, consider a map amendment of the Northeast Connector property. This is a public hearing also, and we'll start with staff's introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Michael, members of council. Tonight's zoning map amendment request is 21-08, ordinance 2125. The request includes a parcel located on the Northeast Connector, tax record 13990. That's deed book 1150, page 662. And the request includes R10 from R10 General Residential District to R8 Neighborhood Residential District. The parcel size is approximately 60 acres. The applicant is Kyle DiPittoro from DP Development. And Caleb Carpenter with McKemmon Creed is here tonight as well to present this application. The owner of the property are the King heirs. And in your packets, you will find a written consent to this rezoning petition. The applicant has stated the rezoning to R8 is to increase the density of single-family houses in the parcel due to minimum wetland disturbance. The project will adhere to R8 zoning standards and development and provide adequate tree buffers around the perimeter of the parcel. This property is currently vacant, and the proposed use is a mix of single-family dwellings as well as possible attached dwelling units, which is allowed in the R8 zoning district. The adjacent properties are all currently zoned R10 general residential, and there are no utility services provided. And I will pull up the future land use map here shortly. But that classifies this parcel as much and a lot of the surrounding area as general residential, which is defined as areas located within the city's corporate limits and public utilities are provided. Areas classified as general residential typically consist of lot sizes ranging from 1/4 to 1/2 acre in size and have an established network of roads that are well-connected but often lack sidewalks. The general residential classification also features areas of low-density development with roads that are not well-connected and frequently terminate in cul-de-sacs. Compact residential neighborhoods that are set aside, significant natural vistas, parkland, landscape features, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. Development considerations include environmental impacts, urban sprawl, road connectivity, impact on adjoining neighborhoods, protection of natural features and vistas, and the availability of adequate infrastructure. These parcels are not presently located in any regulated floodplain or watershed in the city's codes. I will zoom out here. As you can see on the current zoning map, these parcels are both currently R10, and the surrounding area is also R10. Looking at the future land use map, this shaded yellow here represents that general residential classification, and the star as the approximate area for the rezoning. So moving on to staff comments. For this presentation, we have met all public hearing notice requirements, and those are included in the latter portion of your packets. This property is a 60.83-acre property along the Northeast Connector. It does fall within our Northeast Connector overlay district, and the development will meet all of the requirements as a part of that overlay district. The applicant is requesting R10 to R8 in order to provide slightly increased density and smaller lot sizes, but will still provide a quiet residential neighborhood setting with connectivity to urban areas of the city. Looking at the current zoning district descriptions for R10 and R8, those are before you all. But really, the main difference is the allowance for attached dwelling units or townhome units in the R8 district. Should you all choose to rezone this property to R8, the following lot size per unit and setback requirements, those dimensional requirements are all included in this table. I would also like to note that Planning and Zoning Board did hear this request in the meeting last week, and they recommended on a 5 to 2 vote that city council approve this rezoning with the adopted consistency statement. So moving on, I will pull this up just because we have had some slight changes here. This now will refer to 160D for the planned consistency statements and the statements of reasonableness. We do treat those both in one statement. So this will look the same as it did previously. The only difference is the, in the event that you all would like to approve a rezoning that does not align with the future land use map, you all can use this future land use map amendment statement. Staff renamed that. I believe it used to be called zoning amendment statement, and that created some confusion. So here are the consistency statement and consistency in future land use. And as I mentioned, Planning Board recommended with the consistency statement. The applicant provided to staff a rezoning exhibit, which is included in your packets. And then you will find the remainder of the application, public notice requirements. There is also a rendering for design that has been provided. Should you all have questions regarding that, I would just like to emphasize that that is for illustrative purposes only, and the staff has not reviewed that design, and that would not be considered a final design for the development of the site. So I am happy to answer any questions that council may have for staff.
At the plan, may I?
Yes.
At the planning and zoning hearing last Tuesday?
Yes.
Were there folks there?
Yes, we did have a number of neighbors show up, some of whom, I believe, are here tonight to speak either for or against this rezoning.
Just with it being that close to the 4th of July, I just wondered if that.
Yes, and we did send out mailed notices to the neighbors ahead of the Planning Board meeting, which we hold that as a public meeting as well. So anyone is welcome to attend.
Counsel, have any further questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. And I do have Mark Louder signed up to speak already. Mark, you want to come up?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Mark Louder. My wife and I own her home directly adjacent to this 60-acre tract here. We, our home's up here. That's as far as it goes. And what I'm suggesting is, I'd ask that you deny the request to change it from R10 to R8 because it increases the density and for a couple of other reasons. And keep in mind what I'm not asking. I'm not asking that this not be developed. I understand the property can be developed and will be developed in the future. What I'm asking is that it stay in keeping with the neighborhood, which is its present zoning, which is R10. This is an old, old neighborhood. If you look back here at all these homes, single-family homes back here, and you have several streets back here in Powell Drive. And let me, let me add this. The way back here, and the people at the planning hearing said they were going to have two entrances on Pond Street. The way to get into this and to my home back here is you come off the Baden Road and go onto Pond Street. And this is this little street right here. And they said they were going to put two entrance ways on Pond Street. And if you come off the Baden Road, you got to make a hard right and then a hard left to get on Pond Street to come in here and to go all the way down in the midst of single-family homes. And if you add another 100, 150 cars a day going back and forth, breakfast noon and night. Because out here, if you go out this way, you're headed out to Palestine area. And if you use the streets out this way, you're going to hit the Baden Road. You're going to go to Baden. So if you work in town, like I do, this is the easiest way to get to my home. In other words, I'm on the other side of this project. The funeral home's down here, or down here. And so I'm on the other side of this project. But I go down Pond Street to get in and out to Amal every single day. And you're asking for more and more cars. That's the connection that all these people are going to use if you allow this density. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't allow any development. I'm saying I'm opposed to the density level from R10 to R8. In addition, of course, they've said, well, they're going to add entrances on the right-hand side and the left-hand side, which, okay, you're on the connector, so you've slowed down the connector even more with that. But I just want to say that we have a very nice community. As you can see, just the blocks, there are no quarter-acre, single-family homes back there in townhomes. That's not what this community is about. This community has been here for decades. Back behind this is the old Baden Road Drive-In. Do you remember that? And these houses have been here, very nice houses, working family houses. They've been here for decades. And we don't have quarter-acre lots and townhouses here. And so all I'm asking is that we keep in keeping with this area because this area actually is very abundant with wildlife, even though there's a lot of houses back here. It hasn't kept a number of deer. We have geese, ducks, heron, hawks. We've seen a couple bald eagles back there. And it, the neighbor, to change this neighborhood to make it more dense would actually change the neighborhood. And that's what I'm here to ask you, not to change the neighborhood. If somebody wants to develop it, fine. But keep it within the neighborhood value and beauty that we have existing as it exists and not take away from it and create an evermore expansion with cars. This right here is a bottleneck. And this is where everybody's going to come in other than wherever they're going to slow down and come in on the connector. So again, I'm asking not to stop development. That's not why I'm here. I'm asking to keep development the way it is in that area and has been for decades to allow it to be congruent with the existing body of homes and keep it R10 instead of R8. And so to do that, you would have to deny the ordinance today. Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Louder?
Mayor Michael, if I may, I would also just like to give the applicant the opportunity to introduce himself and this project if you all have any questions for him.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to address some of the comments that I've heard. I'm Kyle DiPittoro, the developer on the project. I just wanted to take a second to address some of the comments that I heard relative to density and maybe some of the species that would be out there. Density specifically, we can show the proposed site plan. It's 118 lots is what we're showing right now, single-family. Yes, there are smaller lots. However, that's a density under 2 per acre. So as far as the lot size, yes, it's small, but we have a large buffer. We have significant amount of wetlands. We have a significant amount of area between our neighborhood and our neighbors next door to us. So I think we've done that. I think if Caleb is here tonight, he can actually show our site plan so we can kind of give you an idea of what it is that we're proposing to build. Do you have that up here so we can show it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So you can see, the way that it's been laid out, we have really a lot of space between us and our neighbors in some areas. We've shown buffers here. They're heavily landscaped. We'll maintain the existing landscaping that's there, the existing trees and growth that's already there to the best of our ability. Obviously, we'll try to keep all of that. We do have smaller lots. I'm not going to deny that we don't have smaller lots. That's what the building community is doing right now to try to offset costs. That's how we keep our infrastructure costs down. That's how we keep our costs relative to allow for an affordable product. This is probably a mid-200s product. And that's what this community has been telling us that it wants. So we've done our research. We've done our homework. The builders have done their homework. And the objective here is to build a product in keeping with that. So the way to do that is to have smaller lots. As you can see, we've left a lot of open areas. Some of that is due to wetlands and some of it's due to buffers. But we're showing 118 lots on 60 acres, which, again, it's less than 2 lots per acre. As far as any traffic, we will have a traffic study completed. We'll have that, as soon as we go back into school, we'll be able to get full traffic counts. And we'll do what the traffic engineers and NC DOT tells us that we need to do, whether that's adding a right-in, right-out, whether that's adding a right-turn lane so we can add some sort of a stack off of Northeast Connector so that we can keep from creating any traffic, as the gentleman alluded to that was speaking earlier. And then as far as wildlife, we'll do a protected species and cultural resources assessment on the site and make sure that we don't have any bald eagles that were mentioned or anything else because we're not allowed to disturb those things. So we will make sure that we do everything that is necessary to make sure that none of that is disturbed. So I just wanted to talk to those specifics, introduce myself, give you guys an opportunity to ask me any questions relative to what we're showing.
Counsel, have questions?
How many lots would you have on R10?
I think we would end up having close to the same. They would, I mean, they would be slightly bigger at 2,000 per acre or 2,000 square foot larger. But this allows us to have a smaller actual width on our lot. So we may have similar number, but it would be larger lots, which, again, our builders are not too keen on because of costs.
How certain are you that DOT is going to allow that kind of access off Northeast Connector?
I wouldn't say certain. You know, the traffic study is going to be really, really critical, and we're going to have to have some real conversations. I mean, as you got, things change as you go through the permitting process. This is the entitlements process, as we refer to it. And yeah, things could change certainly because of site distances, site triangles, access points, you know, a number of different things. But I imagine that the traffic study is going to produce some of the information that we need relative to any offsites that we need to make, any road widens, left turns, full movement entrances, right-in, right-outs. So all those things will be up for discussion and on the table.
Further questions? Mr. Robinson, I saw you moving to the front. Do you have comments?
Staff did a few years back. We did a kind of a similar mock-up of some road connections across the connector there. Doesn't match this exactly, but we did present that to Mark Morgan over there. And he said that in general, he was fine with that, the idea being that they want to keep a good bit of separation between any roads that intersect. And then they also don't want to have driveways running along the connector, which is also in keeping with our overlay. So I don't know if this exact, again, we have not even, I just saw this today. We haven't even had a chance to review this. I could see several things might change on this, but we haven't reviewed this yet. So I can't say if, when the subdivision comes in and they actually come to get development approval from y'all, if this is what it's going to look like or not. I can say that that area back there was very heavily logged. We had to, not all of it, but the majority on both sides was logged. We had to work with the owners at the time just to keep a kind of a strip along the highway there, along the connector, and then along the neighborhoods as well. So there may be some habitat remaining around in the wet areas back there, but a lot of that was probably taken out as well, so.
So, question?
Yes, ma'am.
Even, and I almost hold my breath because this is not what we're here for.
Yes, you're right.
This in front of us is not what we're here for.
Yeah, and Planning Board got hung up on this. We actually recommended they not come in with this at this time because we don't know what this is going to look like yet.
And that's the reason I would almost not, would almost recommend to my fellow council members that we don't need to be looking at this because this tonight is not about what this looks like in front of us. It is about going from 10 to 8. So I think we've got to get back on that before we, I mean, I've got questions about that, okay?
Right, absolutely.
But I will not ask them because that is not what this public hearing is about.
But I think the prudent question, like you mentioned, is what does the future land use map have for this area? And is 5 units per acre and possibly some townhomes appropriate along the Northeast Connector, which is a major street through the area right here? So that's, I mean, that's kind of what you need to look at. We don't know exactly what the traffic, what the road network's going to be and what the traffic's going to be at this time. We've talked with DOT briefly, but all that will become, be to come later.
Thank you.
Kevin, probably about six months ago, maybe a little longer, we approved another subdivision in this general area. Do you recall that that was, did we go from R10 to R8?
No, that was done R10. That was on Adam Drive. But that was, again, that was kind of up in the neighborhood a little bit more. It did not have as much road frontage along, it didn't have any road frontage along the connector. It was connecting to existing neighborhoods back there. And they did those primarily as clusters as well. So there were smaller lots there with some conservation there and some open space as well. I think that was about 53 units, something like that. Mm-hmm.
Counsel, have any questions? Kevin? Anyone else care to speak for or against? Please come forward. Come on up, ma'am.
I'm not saying.
That's okay. Public hearing, I need your name and address, and you can speak.
Okay, Northeast Hepner, 1342 East Cannon Avenue, Albemarle, North Carolina. And I am on the dead end of Cannon Avenue. My house is the last house on the right, and I'm going to be very affected by this. There's going to be heavy equipment moving through there, so I'm against, not the housing, I understand that things have to move along. I'm against changing it, so I'm for R ten. And it goes along with the size of the house that's going to be built there. So that's all I have to say.
Counsel, have any questions? Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, counsel.
Maybe just for my thinking here, what are we getting different in R eight versus R ten?
Size of property.
Size of property.
10,000 versus 8,000.
You're talking about the lot size?
Lot size.
Okay, that's the only difference.
The only difference is you go from 10,000 to 8,000, and you can also do townhomes on 4,000 square foot lots or clusters of those in there as well.
And you can't do those?
You can't do those in R ten right now.
Okay.
That's right. This doesn't allow any kind of multifamily or anything else like that. That's really, when we changed zoning ordinance earlier, that was, that's the difference between R eight and R ten now.
Bring up the, well, never mind, you've already closed the public hearing, never mind.
Further questions? Comments? What's your wishes, counsel?
I'd place on the table a motion to deny the request.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall to deny the request. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hands, please. Those opposed? Motion carries, four to two. Public hearing number seven, ordinance 2126, amendments to decide the ordinance required by General Statute 160D and the changes thereof.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're not going to pull the whole.
I'm just joking.
Okay.
But it is.
Thanks, Ellie. So we'll pull up the tracking document here. We've tried to summarize this. I hope we've sent enough information to you guys in the past six months or so, or a little bit longer actually, on this. Again, 160D is a whole chapter, a whole section, large chapter rewrite of the state statute that pertains to land use, and pertains to several different sections in our ordinance as well. And it's, the way the school of government has broken it up for us, which was very helpful, is into three different sections, and one is laws that have changed that we don't really have to do anything with. The other are ordinance amendments that are required by us, that we have to have in there. And then the other are, so those are the must-haves in there, is the may do's. And to streamline this as much as possible, we are bringing just the must-haves right now. These are items that are required by the state legislature, and we will do, we have some time later on to go back and consider what we want to add in from the other remaining sections. I will say that once we really dug into this, we were actually quite surprised and actually pleased that we already had a lot of what was required in our ordinances. Wasn't always pretty, but it was in there. And so we did make a number of changes. Most of them are very small and are, in most cases, just a word or two here or there, so that we're in compliance. But there was a few major things. One is we're getting rid of the terms conditionally-use permit. That will be special-use permit from now on. That's really the only change there. We are conditional-use district zoning. That was changed from conditional zoning before. We've also changed a number of definitions, just to make sure those are in keeping with state statute, with what they've got in there. Got some things on board and commissions. There's going to be required oath of office before starting his or her duties. Land use administration. We've got some requirements there when it comes to inspections, on where and when inspections can happen, what kind of credentials need to be presented. We also have some other changes to our development ordinance. We have some items in there about subdivision performance guarantees, requirements with those. We also had to follow the standardized process for housing code enforcement to determine owner's abandonment of intent to repair and need for demolition. I feel we were pretty much already doing that. We've already addressed it, but there was some verbiage that needed to change. We also have a section in there about processing a development agreement as a legislative decision. I don't know that we've done a whole lot of those, but we basically put the whole section in there, so it's available to us, should counsel want to do that in the future. We have some additional language about future land use maps, when those are amended, when they, when they're deemed to be otherwise, when a rezoning is otherwise deemed to be inconsistent, the kind of that last item that you do in a consistency statement, what are processes with that. We have some items in quasi-judicial decisions, including that the board chair has to rule at evidentiary hearings on objections or inclusion to, or inclusion of administrative material, what can be added and brought forth and what can't. And then we had a number of items related to vested rights and permit choice, and they specifically spell out the length of how long specific types of permits are valid. We've got building permits for six months, which I'm pretty sure county does right now. We also need to recognize that development approvals are valid for 12 months, which I think we were already doing on that, but we, I don't know if we'd actually codified it, and we do, we have that in there now. Site-specific vesting plans are given two to five years, and then if there's a multi-phase development, long-term projects of at least 25 acres, those get up to seven years now. So those are really, there's not a whole lot of large substantive changes, but we've made those to it, and that's pretty much it.
You will be coming back later, though, with some additional changes.
We'll have some additional changes to come back later to you guys. We wanted to, since time is of the essence, we wanted to go ahead and get this one done, and then we can come back with some other stuff and be a little bit more room for you guys to discuss whether or not the board wants to do that.
I have three follow-ups. So back before COVID, when every county and city got thrown this, we've got to do this, it was to have been done originally by?
January 1st.
Of this year.
I believe so, yeah.
Of 2020. And then they pushed it back.
They pushed it back to, it's actually, it was July 1st, so.
So they just pushed it back six months, so it was.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So thank you for getting that done, and thank, oh, she's not, oh, there she is. Ellie, because I know Ellie put a lot of time.
Yeah, Ellie and Ashley and Britt have put a lot of time into this, for sure.
And I know it's one of Ellie's goodbye charms here, but.
It's appreciated.
Very much so. There are two things that are not actually mentioned in there, or one is not, and one is not. The videos that are attached here, that are mentioned in here. Whose are they?
Are those school of governments?
SOG, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. And the other thing is, which is a sidebar to this, doesn't have to be included with 160D, is all of those trainings that you have done in the past. Okay? At some point, I want us to look at when we're going to go back.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we've got some new folks that are coming on, and we're throwing them into an ocean if we don't give them that training and man, and make it mandatory.
Fine, I'd very much appreciate it if you guys kept coming too, yeah.
Well, I know, several of us.
I know you've been to several, yeah.
Too many of them, but, okay, just throwing that out.
Yeah, we're going to get back to that.
Thank you.
For sure.
Questions, counsel? Comments?
The bottom line is, the text amendment you've already made, some, most, those changes have been made or have been made recently.
Most of it, we actually had in there already.
Yeah, previously.
Previously. And I really think that this is dealing with, I don't want to say the worst of the worst, but probably some of the municipalities, maybe smaller municipalities that are just very antiquated with their ordinances and haven't updated them in maybe 10 years or more, meant to update that, because we've tried to change them over the years as we've gone on. But there were, as I mentioned, there's a number that needed to be terminology, terminology needed to be changed, and then a couple large sections that had to be put in there.
Oh, we just, go ahead.
Effort by the state to standardize across the state.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is the first time in like 60, 60 years or 70 years that they'd done a large overhaul, so.
Move, approve ordinance 2126.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve 2126. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any more agenda adjustments? Moving into announced allegations, I'll move to Jody Cook, requesting abandonment of former Leonard Avenue right-of-way. Sure did, but I did not close it.
Didn't close it.
Move that public hearing be closed.
If you, give me a motion to rescind your motion.
Okay, a motion to rescind ordinance 2126.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Motion to close public hearing.
Before we do that, anyone else care to speak for or against? Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing 2126. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, Ms. Hall, give me that motion again.
Unless someone else would like to make that. Ordinance 2126 approved.
Move to approve. Ordinance, I just went down on my.
Move it be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2126.
2126, yes.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Birch, for catching that. Move back to number nine, Jody Cook, requesting abandonment of former Leonard Avenue right-of-way. Mr. Cook, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jody Cook. I currently own the properties at 123 and 125 Leonard Avenue in Albemarle. And back when Leonard Avenue was realigned with the current Mall Springs Road, the old roadway that was through there was, when it was surveyed by Dent Turner, was established to be an abandoned right-of-way. The DOT turned it over to the city, and they took over the right-of-way, but my father-in-law, he owned Steel Oil Company and those two houses behind. When he passed, my mother-in-law and my father-in-law's daughters wanted me to have the properties, so I bought them out of the estate. Did not mess with the business, as that was South Central purchase that. However, I need, or I'm asking if I can get that out of an abandoned right-of-way status to a perpetual easement, utility easement, and give the city an easement as far as our utilities, our water and sewer lines that are under the old Leonard Avenue, but I need to try to get that out of an abandoned right-of-way status and to be a perpetual utility easement.
Are you asking all the way from Main Street or just in front of your houses?
On behalf of zoning and planning, and I'm going to request that it all be classified as a utility easement.
So right there besides Steel Oil, between Steel Oil and Coys, over the laundry mat?
Well, it's the old, it's just a concrete block there now.
That's right.
Quarter of Leonard and East Main, right.
Right. Right, and my mother-in-law actually had to request that the fence be put up at the end of the pavement at Leonard Avenue, because cars were using it as a cut-through and cutting right through our driveways. My father-in-law and myself, when he passed, have maintained the area, have kept the grass mowed, have kept gravels down on the driveways, over top of the right-of-way, and haven't asked for anything from the city. We've just taken care of it as if it was our property.
Ms. Birch, will we need an agreement from the other property owners on each side also?
So in order to abandon the right-of-way?
Yes.
So the next meeting, I think, is what the regulation is going to be. To abandon the right-of-way, and that will have to be publicized, I'll be in favor to keep that. But the regulation will be the first.
So the public hearing would be held in September?
Likely.
Likely the second meeting in September. Okay. Counsel, have any questions?
Would ask that Ms. Brick, go ahead with the proceeding and draft the documents for the August 2nd meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to proceed with the documents for the August 2nd meeting.
To request the abandonment of former Leonard Avenue.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Britt, will you make the contact with the other property owners?
That doesn't need to be done yet, does it?
Yeah. But we'll let them know then for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative reports, number 10, Departmental Spotlight Presentation, Parks and Recreation.
At least on our bicycle. Is it two wheels, or is it more than that?
It's four. It's four.
Oh, then it's not a bicycle.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Manager Ferris. Thank you for allowing me to come up and give an overview of our department and some of the things that we do, just to let you know how we are fitting into the total of city government. So the mission of Parks and Recreation is to enhance the lives of citizens by providing recreation facilities and programs that encourage fun, fellowship, and wellness while providing opportunities for personal growth, economic development, and community interaction. So we have, in Parks and Recreation Department, we have our Recreation Division and our Parks Division. So there's responsibilities of the Recreation Division, our youth and adult athletic leagues, quality recreation programming for all ages, special events, and operation of our pools. In our Parks Division, they are responsible for maintaining all of our parks, maintaining all of our buildings, helping with the setup for special events, and any special projects that are assigned. So the Recreation Division overview fiscal year 21 highlights. We did a remote learning center at the EE Y Dell Center. We are in the middle of our third year of summer camp. The pools were able to open this year after being closed for two years because of COVID. We started Food Truck Friday in August of 2020, and we started, we did that August through October every week, and then we started back up again March, and we'll continue that once a month into October. And we also added bands to the Food Truck Fridays. We did implementation of our online reservation and registration system. We have secured 53, 59,300 in grant funding, and since, I didn't count fiscal year 20, but since fiscal year 19, and this year, our revenues have increased by 62%. So here's what we want to accomplish in fiscal year 22. Our overall budget is $875,000. So for the Recreation Division, we want to plan, develop, implement, and evaluate recreation programming. We want to meet the needs of our community, addressing gaps through recreation programming, organize, implement, and evaluate adult and youth athletic leagues, organize, implement, and evaluate the URE Senior Games, facilitate building and facility rentals, plan, develop, implement, and evaluate special events for the City of Albemarle and also for the Parks and Recreation Department, and book performance. and book performing acts for the Albemarle Neighborhood Theater. Is there any questions so far on any of that? Okay, well.
Your budget for this will pay for like the bands on the first Friday of each month.
We will have to supplement, supplement that with some sponsorship dollars as well. It does not totally cover all of that. So the Parks Division overview in fiscal year 21, our highlights were, we installed new playground equipment at Chuck Moorhead Park. There's a new roof and a new HVAC system at the EE Y Dell Center. Um, we also replaced the flooring in the EY Dell Center weight room. We continued to make repairs at Don Montgomery Park, remodeled the pool house at Rock Creek Park Pool, replaced the pool filtration and motor at Rock Creek Pool. Uh, the motor was not an anticipated um, cost, but one that we, we were able to, to fix so it could open this year. Um, installed the kiosks and sidewalk medallions for the downtown walking routes, routes, and also kept parks open during COVID-19. So in fiscal year 22, our budget is $1.1 million. Um, we're gonna upkeep and maintain um, the three buildings that we're responsible for, which is Nivens, Y Dell, and the Albemarle Neighborhood Theater. Upkeep of the grounds and maintenance of five large parks, City Lake Park, Chuck Moorhead Park, Rock Creek Park, Don Montgomery Park, and Optimus Park. We also maintained three small parks, East Cannon Park, Peel Park, and West Albemarle Park. Upkeep, upkeep and maintain of the Greenway and walking routes, upkeep and maintain of two um, outdoor pools, Rock Creek Pool and Chuck Moorhead Pool, support recreation staff with program setup, set up for special events, and then other special projects. Any questions on that?
No, but I have a comment, but I hope in the future we'll see an additional park added to that, which is the uh, the ballpark.
West Casset.
The West, the West Casset project. At, at some point in time before my demise, um, would love to see that incorporated because it, it's gonna mean so much to this community and its growth. If you look around at what's happening athletically with our young people, you'll see that it, I hope, I would like this community to see what can happen when you do that with the, the funds that come in, uh, the sponsorships that are there, and the people that come now, they stay in Albemarle. We're in Charlotte.
Yep.
Uh, play in the west end of the county, so um, just like to keep that in front of our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dry. So our fiscal year 22 goals and priorities, and these are aligned with council's budget priorities. So under talent and compensa- compensation management, continue training and educational offerings to enhance a diverse workforce, specialty certifications depending on the role, um, as far as infrastructure goes, um, paving of Northwoods Lane that leads into Chuck Moorhead Park, the roof replacement at Nivens Center, new diving structures and boards at both Rock Creek and Chuck Moorhead Pools. Um, continue to work with Stanley Community College on the parking lot at EY Dell Center, paint the windows um, on the outside of the gym at EY Dell Center, repair of the Greenway retention wall, which is also a FEMA Florence project, and then finish the Florence repairs at Don Montgomery Park.
Lisa, if I may stop, uh, I don't know how much is done, but it looks like the paving at Northwoods is already, or Chuck Moorhead's already been completed. Is that correct? I know going into it, it is. It looks really good.
It is complete.
I've got several people that have called to compliment how good it looks.
Yes, and Public Works did the work on that, so um, thank you to their crews and staff that did that.
We're not gonna bring in the high dive back to Northwoods though.
No, no, no. These are just the regular, these are just regular, our just, our diving structures are cracking in. So under community and economic development, increase in diversive, diversify revenue and cost sharing, funding, um, wayfinding implementation, and also the King Alleyway Project, and then engaging multiple generations. We have applied for a learning loss grant for two locations, and we've made it to the second round for that, so we should know something on that grant by the end of July. Weight room equipment at the EY Dell Center, conversion of tennis courts to pickleball courts at Rock Creek Park, that should say Rock Creek Park, sorry. Performances and movies at the Albemarle Neighborhood Theater, special event planning and implementation, including food, food truck Fridays, and exploring a kayaking program at City Lake Park. Any questions?
I just have a comment. May I, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank, sorry, Lisa. I want to thank your staff that's here. Um, we just assume, we as a community, council included, that things just happen, and um, it doesn't just happen. And I know how varied those guys and y'all have been, and even last year. I mean, um, because we couldn't do a lot of things during the summer, I know you, through your leadership, had them doing other kinds of things, um, so that we didn't have to lay anybody off and that kind of thing. Everybody was still working, so. And I guess I see hands-on, um, day-to-day, particularly when they show up at my house to pick up something uh, that I'm, that we're taking from my house out to the park to use for the uh, Food Truck Friday events. I mean, it's, um, I just appreciate them, and I appreciate particularly their supportive view this last four weeks. Um, guys, y'all did a heck of a job on the, you know, since she took a little sabbatical there, not meaning to, um, at the very first day of all, all the summer events. Wasn't that about the same time?
Yes.
And so I just, I appreciate that and appreciate Nikki doing the time and spending the time over there with them, so thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to also echo that to my team as well. They have been very supportive, they're very dedicated. Um, they're even still here tonight, so um.
When I said stick around, they were not counting on us.
I know, no.
But I'm gonna give all of you opportunity, if you want to speak, come up. None of you want to say anything? Well, thank you very much. I know it's been a, a hard couple of years, but you've done a great job, and we appreciate that.
She's got it down pat, I think.
Cindy, you got food truck under control now. You were sweating it a lot early. Okay, thank you.
I think we all want to thank Lisa.
I hope she's glad to be back at work, and I understand you're gonna get rid of your little cart. Good to have you back.
I think she likes this thing down the hallway, too.
Put cards on it so it just.
Number 10, Jay Boles, to give us an update on the 2020 census.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me here tonight. I like to keep this somewhat brief, mainly because the Census Bureau hasn't released too much information, especially for us local governments. But um, I, there are some moving things going on with the census, and I'd like to update you all with those tonight. The counting efforts of the 2020 census ended on September 30th of 2020, so it has almost been an entire year since the end of the census. We know by now that the data has been released at the national and state level. However, the county and municipal data is not slated to be released until as late as September 30th of 2021. The delays for the county municipal data have put many local governments in a precarious position when it comes to the timeline of redistricting election districts. The matter of fact here is that we're ultimately unsure as to whether we have to redistrict or not, and we won't fully know until we receive the appropriate data. For the City of Albemarle, we are already taking the appropriate steps to ensure we are prepared to redistrict, but only if the data tells us that we need to. We are already communicating with Central Atlanta Regional Council to put together a proposal to help us prepare for and execute a redistricting process. They can assist us with illustrating the raw GIS data and draw new district boundaries and provide assistance in navigating the process altogether. The need to redistrict is based on multiple factors. Those factors include population gain, population loss, and the movement of the population throughout the city. All election districts must be within 5% population margin of each other in order to be in compliance. If we receive the data and it shows that these districts are still within 5% margin of each other, then we may not need to redistrict our council districts after all. If the data does show we need to redistrict, we will be prepared with the proper guidance to do so. Another annual task we are currently working on is updating the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management with the data they need to update the annual population estimates for our city. These annual estimates are what I consider to be a stopgap between the decennial census and will show our growth on an annual basis. The data they require from us are areas that we have recently annexed, changes in populations in group quarters, and also new residential construction in the form of building permits issued. Since new construction in the housing market seems to be a hot topic recently, I wanted to share the construction data that I acquired to send to the state. In the last fiscal year, from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th of 2021, the city has permitted 99 new single-family homes, three duplexes, and two multifamily projects that have 29 dwelling units each. This is exactly 163 dwellings permitted. The state will take the data we provide along with the data they have acquired and generate an annual population estimate for the city. The census data that we will soon be receiving will be nearly an exact headcount and demographic data set that was acquired by responses from individuals. This is all the update that I have for tonight. We do have a couple of things going on with, you know, getting data here in-house and, you know, interpolating it and making decisions based off of it, but as of right now, that's all I have. And hopefully in August or September, I'll have a little bit more on, of what Albemarle did in the census once we get all that data in here. Love to entertain any questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Comments? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, before we move to number 12, I will have one more unannounced allegation that I was holding to go with this uh, topic. Mandy Smith, 2008 Woodhurst Lane, to talk about traffic at Anderson Heights stop signs.
Thank you for your time and attention tonight. I live at the corner of Anderson Road and Woodhurst Lane. I'm experiencing the worst of the neighborhood. There is entirely too much traffic on Woodhurst Lane. People are using it as a cut-through to get off the Troy Road. They turn in at Anderson Grove Church and they zip through my neighborhood at 45 to 50 miles an hour most of the time. If there were a police officer stationed in my driveway, they could pay their entire salary with a month of tickets. Uh, the speed limit is 35. There is no speed limit sign on that street except out near Preform Line Products. So I don't know if drivers don't know that speed limit continues into the neighborhood, or if they just don't care. Um, we would like to see our speed limit reduced to 25. Um, of course, that's not gonna help if there's nobody there to enforce it. I've been to the police. I know they're shorthanded. I know they can't give us an officer full-time. They have had um, those digital machines out there, they're registering speed, and they're counting cars, so we appreciate that information, too. Uh, the other thing is that four-way stop, uh, nobody's stopping. That has got to be one of the busiest intersections in town. I counted 100 cars. 85 did not stop.
And that's at that, at that intersection of Woodhurst?
Woodhurst and Anderson, uh, where everybody's going to Preform Line and Enforge and.
Ma'am, is this at the intersection where the body shop's at?
Yes.
And the daycare used to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And you know, the daycare's gonna reopen.
As a daycare?
As an adult.
Co-trained adults.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right. I knew that something was going on.
But um, for the most part, the people on Woodhurst Lane stop at the stop sign because nobody on Anderson stops.
But it's a four-way stop there?
It's a four-way stop, but it's just ignored.
Did it more recently start with the increased development in the housing?
Well, the traffic on Anderson has just, I mean, it's gone up. It's just multiplied with all those houses. They, they're finishing up three more houses right behind me. Um, just another 300 feet down the road, they're gonna build six more houses on one lot. I mean, these people are gonna have yards like this. Um, I don't know why they don't just get an apartment. But um, yeah, we need some help down there, our neighborhood. You know, we have wildlife concerns. We have deer, we have ducks, geese, um, pets. Across the street from me, one house has a two-year-old child. The other house across from me is an 80-year-old lady. She's an extremely careful driver. I mean, she's gonna be backing out one day, and she's gonna get knocked into next week.
Thank you, ma'am. Ross, you want to come on up and give us your recommendations for the intersection? And then I have a couple of questions after, after that.
Um, back in, I would say late May, when this, when this concern was brought to staff, um, Nikki Hardy and I, along with Kevin and the police chief, went out and we, we visited the intersection, and we, we viewed some of the issues that, that we had heard concerns of, and there are some legitimate complaints there. Um, after being there for a little while, we did come up with some recommendations, and in the memo that you all have with you, um, we stated four primary recommendations. One is to increase our signage there, or, or at least redo the signage. Uh, some of the stop signs are old and faded. Uh, it is a four-way intersection, so that's something that we can do easily in-house is update our signage, put more reflective, um, up-to-date stop signs, and put four-way signs on each one. Another one is also adding street markings, pavement markings, which are stop bars, and we even have the reflective, the word "stop" that we can put on the pavement, too, to kind of give more visual looks for drivers. The third recommendation's a little bit different, but we do have a few around town, is to add a four-way flashing stop in that intersection. Traffic is busy there, um, obviously with the new housing development and with the commercialism going on in the back, close to Preform Line and those type things. We saw some tractor-trailer trucks and, and some um, other box vans and stuff going back through there. So the four-way flashing light, we think, would help out a little bit, too, as far as visual preference. And then the other recommendation staff was making was to possibly try to lower the speed limit. Uh, we're just making that recommendation not based on the data, because at the time, when we were out there visually watching, we didn't know what the data was. We just today got the full count. I think there was one more spot that the police department was gonna move the traffic trailer to, uh, maybe by the end of the week. Correct. So we, we really haven't had time to fully vet all the data to see if there is a true speeding problem. Uh, Kevin was able to analyze a little bit of it, but um, just from what we could visually see, obviously with the traffic flow and the house count, if, if you can lower the speed limit there, um, it'll help with some of the traffic concerns in the intersection.
Ross, where does the improvement stop on Anderson when 2427 is completed? How far up toward that intersection do they come?
Well, you know, their, their, Anderson Road's gonna be similar to what happened with Leonard Avenue, what Mr. Cook was talking about earlier. They, they are abandoning a portion of Anderson Road, shifting it over to align with Hillco, not Hillco, um.
Bernard, well.
What, what used to be Bernard.
It is Hillco.
It's what is now Hillco.
Right.
So I'm not real sure. I'm sure whatever improvements they make is gonna be tied back into the existing of Leonard.
By the time they redo that, it's gonna come up all the way past probably Walter Prening, isn't it?
I'm not sure. I haven't seen the plan.
Be very close to it.
Is that like coming where the old yellow house used to stand? Isn't that, it will go through there?
Close to that, yeah. It's gotta come past where Stanley Gymnastics and, and that, because that's about where Stanley Gymnastics is. I believe that's post-road. It's where it's, the, the road is supposed to taper over and line up in the Hillco Street.
I know we had, there were some discussions a couple of years ago about should that intersection be made into a roundabout because of, we're gonna see a lot of increased truck traffic, because people leaving these businesses over there that are gonna go toward Montgomery County are not gonna come back to Henson Street, what, 2427? They're gonna go down that way and hit that roundabout. So we're gonna have to do something to enlarge that intersection, too, probably. And there was discussion, should we consider a roundabout? What is staff considered on that since uh, we know this, all, these changes are coming?
Where?
I've, I've never been a part of that discussion, as far as a roundabout there at Anderson.
Before you.
Yeah.
But where was that?
This intersection he's talking about.
At Woodhurst?
Anderson.
I don't ever remember that.
I remember one by the cemetery.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah.
I remember that at the cemetery.
At the Shell Station.
Right, but I don't remember one at that intersection.
No, that, and that man, I've been to council, that was previous, probably staff that was talking about it. That's been. It's been several years.
It may have been before my time. I don't think...
Is that something we would look at, knowing that we're going to have so much increased truck traffic? Or do you think we would be okay with improving the intersection with stop signs?
I would defer that at the council. I mean, obviously, we can do a traffic count. We can do a traffic study just to see what impact we're going to have now with the residential development and with, I mean, obviously, looking into the future with the ABC coming. If that develops out, Anderson Road is going to, that intersection is going to see a tremendous impact of traffic.
It's going to see a tremendous impact, increase in traffic.
Yes.
And that may have been when DOT was talking about making the other roundabout. There was some discussion back at that intersection. I am fine with the stop signs. I just don't know that that's going to solve our problem.
I think it will, I mean, one of the things I think will is putting up signage, and particularly whenever Mandy said she didn't see but one sign, a speed limit sign there, okay? You know, people ordinarily will look at them. Now, granted, they may not pay attention to them, but, and I think putting up those, the flashings, don't we have one of those up at Montgomery and Second?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that that was a new stop.
That's right.
Or newly recreated stop, and people have paid attention to it. Yes, I've seen some folks run right through it. But even with the DOT doing their thing, Ronnie, I think we've got to do something now.
Oh, I think we've got to do something, yes.
And I think that we do the things we know we can do right now, doing the 25 and doing the stop, things that we can do in-house, particularly.
And I will remind counsel, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, is that something we need to get DOT on to look at?
It's not DOT.
Well, I was going to say it.
The street goes all the way...
The portion from Hinson to Anderson Road of Woodhurst is DOT maintained. So there is one, there is one-fourth of that intersection of those streets that we do not have any rights to now. I feel comfortable with being able to put the pavement markings down. What we're going to put down is going to meet DOT requirements with reflectivity and so that shouldn't be an issue. And then upgrading their sign shouldn't be an issue, as long as we meet their standards as well. But changing the speed limit on Woodhurst from Anderson towards Hinson, which is down towards Preform Line, we have no control over that speed limit.
Have you talked to DOT about any improvements there?
I have not talked to DOT.
And then one time, there was also discussion about widening the intersection when you make the turns because these tractor-trailers are going to have a problem there.
That's, that would be a discussion in Bird Road as well, that Bird Road station.
Sterling.
I'm not, again, I haven't had any of these discussions.
I think maybe all these are great suggestions, I think, but if any of us were to go out there and sit and the neighbors, as you saw, 85 to 100 cars go through there at any given time, I would almost bet you that a lot of the same people are the guilty ones that are doing it every single day. And so I think if we could have, you know, enforced police presence, I know our officers have a lot going on, but even if, even if we have a vehicle, a marked patrol car, that we could sit somewhere in the area, whether it's in the old daycare parking lot or ideally have it, you know, with a police officer in it ready to write some tickets, because you get out there and start pulling a couple of cars over, and I'm telling you, words spreads fast, and it will be known as, hey, don't run the stop sign on Anderson Road. You know, so that's maybe something that we could do. I know the, our new interim chief is here tonight, and that's the most, that's the quickest and probably the most cost-effective thing that we can do, to get the fastest results.
I'd say 35 miles an hour through there. There's some places we go through at Beach that are, they're fairly large lots, they're not real compact, speed limit's 20. And there's another one that's for cluster housing, it's 15.
Counsel, do you wish to proceed with having Ms. Birch bring us back in ordinance to make some of these changes at the next meeting and for the speed limit? And also let Ross look at making the pavement markings, but discuss it with DOT before he actually makes them. I'll entertain a motion.
A move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
This is the Ross Show.
Ross, I'm hopeful you might can get a little help from DOT working on that intersection since Woodhurst is theirs, if they would help us with a little widening it or something. Okay, moving on to number 13, update on Heritage Court curb and gutter installation.
Just to inform council, brief update since the resolution back in December, I believe. I think we had a public hearing.
December? Was it December?
It may have been in December. We have been in constant contact trying to get in touch with one of the property owners where this curb and gutter is going to affect the private property owner, because we will, the city will be discharging water onto a piece of private property when this curb and gutter is installed. So within that, we've been trying to reach out with this property owner. I just heard back from her today. I sent her a certified letter two weeks ago. She reached out to me today, and we have an appointment to meet with her next Tuesday at 4 o'clock. So hopefully, we can start some negotiations on how we can figure out how we're going to be able to discharge the water on her property.
Well, and I spoke to one of the other neighbors, and apparently he had spoken with her prior to getting the letter, but explained to her what the situation was. I don't know if I could talk to you since then or not. He said she was okay with what you and I discussed, the piping and all that.
Again, we're going to have to come to terms with her on what, we're going to have to get an easement, and that's a 250-feet stretch from the top of the cul-de-sac down to the creek. Now, I have talked to our engineer. We're looking at roughly about 150 feet of possible piping to the 100-year floodplain. So that may help a little bit. But again, those are just things that we need to clarify with the property owner to make sure she understands the impact of what's going to happen to her vacant lot.
This property owner owns a house and vacant lot, and the proposal is to go right down the property line with 10 feet easement on either side, which will not affect buildability of the lot because of that. So my last, well, I heard last was, oh, she was okay.
So follow-up, ma'am?
Yes.
I asked that it be put on here because I had one of the few, there are only a handful of residents on there, but I had one of them come up to me at an event and ask me what was going on, because we hadn't done anything with it. And this just blows my mind that the last time we talked about it was December. So why don't I know, why is this new to me that, about the property? That's new, that we're having to run something through it? Or did we hear that before? Have we heard that before?
Yes, we knew before there had to be an easement with that property.
That the water is going to run through somebody else's property? Because for some reason, it sounds like it's a lot more involved than the original, than the original request.
On the memo that I provided counsel back during the public hearing, there was some items for consideration that I put in my bullet points, and one of them was potential right-of-way easement acquisitions in the negotiation with Mrs. Johnson or with Mr. Poplin, on whichever, at that time, we weren't aware where the property line was going to be, on how we were going to be able to discharge any stormwater runoff onto their properties. So at that time, that's, I knew that that was going to be an issue. I didn't realize at the time that Ms. Johnson was not going to communicate with us. So...
And right, you know, right now, the water dissipates.
Right, right.
You put the guttering and the stormwater in.
We are channeling water now, and we are forcing it into a central location once you put a curb and gutter on there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Number 14, information, city streets adopted for litter cleanup. This is information, if someone has a comment. You have a list of streets that have been adopted.
I just, and again, I asked that this be put on there. I got a phone call from a person that lives on Yadkin, and I met with this couple, and they showed me a vacant lot that was just trash, literally trash. So I took my picker upper and one of your orange bags and went over to clean it up, and they said, you don't have to come do this. We just want the city to realize that folks get on Yadkin flying again, throwing stuff out as they go through. I just, and I thought, you know, we need to have an update on where they have been adopted. So with, these are three new ones. About how many places do we have adopted now? About how many streets?
Officially, that is the list. We are working with, we are working with the Monarch Group now. We're waiting to confirm. I think they've got some liability concerns, from what I'm hearing. Renee Kazai has kind of been managing the Adopt a Street program. But Monarch is going to adopt a portion of Greenwood Street over close to the old North Almaral Elementary School. But besides that, that's the active list that we have right now, besides the ones that we have for the fire department. That is the active list.
Oh, yeah.
Your Honor, if I may...
Yes, sir.
Tag into this, mentioning litter is, I don't know if any of the rest of you folks have gotten some phone calls regarding taking a look to put up no littering signs. Is that something that we could do, or is it state?
On our streets, we could do.
I remember growing up, it was, seeing the signs, the $200 mark.
That's right.
We need, we need to put some teeth into this thing. It appears it continues to gain momentum, and the litterers are still out there in multitude. So what would be our steps to...
Ms. Birch, have you looked at the latest legislature bill that is increasing what Mr. Dry says, the teeth? Has it passed both houses? Before we put up a sign, if we're going to talk about penalty, we need to know that. If we're just talking about putting up no littering, that's one thing. But if you want the penalty on it, we need to make sure of what the law is going to be.
The way people are today, they'd be spitting in the wind. You're going to have to have some teeth in it. I would like to see that occur and...
So we let Ms. Birch come back to us when she knows whether that has passed the legislature or not?
That way, I can at least let these folks know that we are looking at it within ten.
Because penalty has gone up from the old 200 days.
I'm glad. Go to catch it.
All right, thank you.
Well, I will say, too, that Keep Stanley Beautiful has been updating us. I think a lot of you might be on the emails, but again, you know, they have reached out to, I guess it's the clerk of court, and there are some people that are coming through the courts that are being sentenced community service hours, and they're reaching out to Keep Stanley Beautiful. So I know over the past month, we've actually had some people that are using their community service hours to collect trash. Now, on the flip side, up until last week, I think most of the streets and roads that they've been picking up is DOT maintained, which is fine. That's still litter that's getting picked up. But up until last week, I think they did work in one of the city streets that we were notified on that there was some trash bags, but we do have some people that are trying to do it.
And some of the people that have contacted me are part of, let's keep Stanley Beautiful. I think they're getting a little bit worn and getting out and picking up. So I think anything that we can do to help perpetuate the lack of jurisdiction, if you will, it's not going to hurt us. If one person pays the fine, then we're doing what we got to do. So I would appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ross. Number 15, police and fire staffing. Fire chief, would you start, please?
Been asked to provide an update on staffing. Excuse me. Currently, the City of Almaral Fire Department has 44 personnel. Of the 44, 39 are actually suppression, actually go out and fight the fire. Three admin, two part-time. Of the 39, we have 35 that are active, four in training, which are the new employees that are in training and will be released later, at the latter of this month, excuse me, and one vacancy. That vacancy occurred roughly the 17th of June.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions?
So, yes, ma'am?
Yes, but let's, before you bring that up, counsel, have any questions about the staffing?
I guess I do. And is that including these that are graduating and all that, that we've got this acknowledgement for?
That is four of the, they will go on staff, they will actually staff the trucks after graduation.
So some of these are already working? Is that what you're saying? Some of these are already on duty?
What I'm saying is that we have four that are paid. We hired them. We had to put them through class.
Right.
Yes.
I guess maybe I'm not making myself...
Right now, you've got 35, and then when you get the four graduates, you have 39.
That is correct.
Figure.
Let me, we have 35, and let me back up, I apologize. 35, four new, one vacancy. And that vacancy occurred in June.
So when those four graduate on the 22nd, you have telephone...
We'll have 38 at that time.
And of the 10 that are on here, four of them are yet, are still in school, soon to be graduated.
That is correct.
That's, I guess I just needed to restate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? While you're there, go ahead and talk about the invitation that you gave us tonight.
Thank you. We've been fortunate enough to be able to put on a recruit class. Prior to this recruit class, unfortunately, we've had to send staff, new firefighters, to Concord and other places for joint training. During that training, we've had, we've had some lost. So with that, the city manager, human resources, both agreed that we could, we could run our own recruit class. In doing that, we've been very successful. It was a collaboration of not only the City of Almaral, but businesses within the city themselves, looking at YMCA, and of course, our local departments, the volunteer departments. Jan, I'm sorry, the, actually, the graduation will culminate the fire training. They will still have six weeks of EMT, but the graduation will actually culminate their actual fire training. So we look forward to any of council that can be at the graduation. I know the graduates will be happy as well. And there's a lot of work that goes into this. So hats off to my staff, hats off to the entire City of Almaral, Parks and Recs, housing. They play a key part in this as well.
Counsel, have any questions? Fire chief?
I guess it's just follow-up because it's on the departmental reports, not necessarily right now, but they're next. I see that you had three folks attend company officer training in Spartanburg last month.
That's correct.
And were those battalion chiefs, or were they firefighter ones, or who were they?
All right. It was one battalion chief, and if I'm not mistaken, two captains.
Oh, good.
And that was a training that has been across the United States. We were fortunate enough to have it close to us, and one of the things that coming in here to this position, upward mobility and education, as well as continued training, was on the agenda. And so happy to be able to do that.
So it was a national training that just happened to be in Spartanburg?
That's correct.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferris, if you will introduce our police chief, our interim chief, before he gives his presentation.
Sure. Mayor, city council, of course, people are aware through various communications, including the news release, that David Poston has been hired to serve as our interim police chief. And he began, gosh, probably June...
21st.
Yeah, June 21st.
21st, thank you. And, and it's, you know, as they say, hit the ground running, but doing a lot of good things, things we've been looking for. It's similar to what Chief Ruten alluded to, what he's doing in the fire department. Chief Poston is trying to enable and empower officers and provide good leadership, but also allow them to be decision-makers and give them the support they need, and just be able to perform their job to the best of their ability, think about their careers, their goals and desires, but also provide leadership to the department. This is something that you always do need. And so just really pleased to have Chief Poston here with us, and just like to, I remember introducing myself to council, and then maybe if he wants, and then move into his staffing report.
Chief?
Mayor, it's a pleasure to appear here before you first time. Honored to serve this department and this community. I've been overwhelmed with the graciousness of everybody in the community and the department as well, in their welcoming me. Super impressed with the amount of support that the community and the bond that they have with the department. And I know when I talked to Mr. Ferris about this position originally, I told him that a big philosophy that I wanted to bring in, and I've seen it in practice here, is the fact that even though the state of North Carolina may give the authority to officers to act and give them a badge and handcuffs and the authority to act in courts, true authority, the police department doesn't come from that. It comes from the community and the... and the trust and the bond that they have. And that is a very strong bond here, is one that we want to build and make it even stronger during my brief time here. But I just thought I'd let you know that as a, a piece of my philosophy and it's, uh, it's something I take very seriously. Um, prior to coming here, I know, uh, Mr. Ferris asked me just to tell you a little bit about myself. I retired from Charlotte Mecklenburg in 2018. Um, I was speaking with, with Mr. Dry earlier. Come from a family of public service. My father's a retired fire, uh, station commander with Charlotte Fire Department. And I have two brothers, one that just retired from Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department on July the 1st. My other brother retires next July the 1st. So for the first time in about, I'd say 1966, Charlotte will be without a post and serving there. But with that, I'd like to answer any questions you may have of me and then I'll give you a brief on our staffing.
Welcome, and we look forward to great things. Thank you very much for helping us out during this interim.
Thank you.
You can go right on into your report then.
Okay. Right now, we're 11 officers short, um, but we have three that are on board to start the academy at Stanley Community College in August. We have to have all three of them onboarded by August the 9th. We're waiting on one set of medical records to come back, um, along with their psychological, which we don't think there's going to be a problem there, but two of them are already back, they're formally offered. Along those lines, we also have four on deck that are going up for oral boards on Friday. Um, we feel very confident if they make it through the oral board that they're going to have a clean background and be able to be hired, which if that takes place, we should have seven starting the academy on August the 18th, which would put us in very good shape moving forward.
Counsel, have any questions? Comment?
Just a follow-up. Um, and these are folks, just so that I understand as well as my council members, that we, if we bring them in and we send them through BLET, we actually start paying them whenever they start and we pay them to go through BLET. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this BLET is how many weeks?
It's 16 weeks.
So August, they may get with a field officer, probably in January or February, is that right?
Um, yes, roughly, and then there'll be another 16 weeks of training there.
Or with a field officer.
Right.
Further questions, comments?
I just want to say welcome. I've, I've heard a lot of good things about you. I think we have some mutual people that we know that were previous former Charlotte officers, we'll talk about that at some point in time. But I just want to say, uh, I, I, I've heard from a couple of different people that you've been reaching out to the other chiefs in the municipalities and maybe even the sheriff as well. And I think that's one thing that in a small community, in a small county, uh, the collaboration between law enforcement agencies is very critical. And, uh, that's, that's definitely something that we, we look forward to seeing as well.
Thank you. And not, not just with other chiefs and with the sheriff, but also with the, uh, Fire Department. Chief Bruton has been instrumental in welcoming, welcoming me in. We've already planned some joint training exercises together.
Right.
They'll be beneficial for both of our departments and we're, uh, working to build a close relationship there as well.
Should do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Number 16, the departmental monthly reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions, comment?
I do have some, but I'd like to go back to firefighters again. Do we have, starting with the budget, 71, we have three additional new ones, right? Isn't that, wasn't it, isn't that in the budget?
We have provisions to apply in which we've done.
Right.
Seek the FEMA grant.
Right. And we've not heard from FEMA grant yet.
That is correct.
So we do have a possibility, as I'm looking at, at Chief Bruton, we still have a possibility of three more if we get the grant.
That is correct.
Is that right? Okay, so that one's still in.
That's correct. Yeah, the grant is running, I think I've, um, sent some of those updates, but the grant is running even behind their anticipated schedule, but, uh, you know, we're at their mercy and if, we'll wait, uh, if we get news that they're going to fund three firefighters for about three years, uh, we can wait a month or two. But as soon as we hear something, we'll let everyone here know.
Uh, Ms. Howie, should you have comments on the monthly reports?
Just a couple, um, and I mentioned one about the training in Spartanburg. There are several, um, on the EDC that I would like to go through and I may wait, um, and go back through those at the end of the evening so not to delay anything else that we've got. I just would like to say that if you've looked at, um, the new hires for the summer, there are, um, probably about 30 of them that are just part-time. Guys, we, we are a wonderful employer and I look back at Parks and Recreation, you've got most of them, those part-time folks, but a lot of youth, um, a lot of youth get their training right here with Parks and Recreation. I guess I didn't realize that until I saw their names right in front of me of how many of them get to do that.
A ton of lifeguards.
Do you want?
A ton of lifeguards.
We do have a ton of lifeguards and at least we got them, that's, there is a shortage of some places.
Who isn't?
Oh, I'm sure. Um, there are a couple of things on, on, um, EDC or economic development I'll go over later on.
Further questions, comments? Your municipal calendar is in your agenda, anyone have any comments on that? Move on to the consent agenda. Number 18, resolution of support for the North County Counties in the opioid settlement and memorandum of understanding related to the settlement and distribution of funds. Number 19, consider a three-year contract for retail strategies for downtown strategies program. This was mentioned to you in the budget process and you see the numbers on that. Number 20, ordinance 2127, changes to the nuisance compliance timeline. This was requested by Mr. Aldridge at our last meeting. Number 21, ordinance 2128, amending the fiscal year 2122 operating budget, and you see the reason for that. Ordinance number 22, ordinance 2129, amending the ARP project budget. If you will see from our initial estimate, we're going to get considerably more money because that has to be amended. Number 23, ordinance 2130, adopting the PD Avenue parking project budget, that is to do the parking lot that we have previously approved. Number 24, ordinance 2131, amending the streetscape and wayfinding project budget, this is where the signage and all that we have previously approved. 25, resolution approving the updated salary schedule, and you'll see the schedule in your agenda. Number 26, consider road closures for the charters of freedom dedication ceremony. I think we informed everybody at last meeting what the date would be and the times and all, this is to approve the road closing. Number 27, consider road closures for the dinner on main event. And number 28, consider a street closure for a back-to-school giveaway event. Do I have any comments or questions?
I would like to pull out, um, the resolution for the updated salary schedule.
Okay. Further?
Move approval of the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of 25.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to move the consent agenda except for 25.
Right.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 25, you have comments, Ms. Hughes?
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple of questions or I guess maybe some clarification. Um, Dana, if you can help me here. Um, uh, I read your, um, email, uh, letter to manager Ferris. So, and I tried to find, because I know you provided us the schedule.
Yes.
And that was helpful. And based on what you shared, this has been changed.
It has.
From the first time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
So just, I'm walk through, I'm going to ask, kind of walk through something. So, um, uh, a scenario, so I've worked in a department seven years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I have that individual, then I have another individual who worked in that department the same amount of time and has been promoted up, say, to the manager.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can the person who's been there, uh, and has not been promoted, is there, are we going to get over, in other words, could that person make more than the manager makes or?
We'd have to look at individual cases. Um, you know, we base these changes in salary on the time and position.
Okay.
Right? So somebody who has just been promoted into a position has recently gotten an increase.
Right.
Right? To move into that role, but they've been in the role a short time.
Right.
So on average, uh, when somebody comes into a role, they're going to be closer to the minimum of a salary grade, right? Um, as they move closer to that nine years within the position, they're going to be really close to the midpoint.
Okay.
So if we have individual scenarios we need to talk through, um, one of the things my team and I spend a lot of time doing is auditing that start date of the position because we found some incorrect data as I began to work with the, um, department directors where maybe a title change had occurred, but they had really been in that position longer.
Okay.
So that's one of the things we really spend a lot of time auditing.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So this, this schedule, was there, um, I mean, a big difference or?
So the main difference there is the, um, the minimum salary grade that was listed.
Okay.
Um, in the past, um, our city had a practice of having a hiring rate. If you look at the 2020 salary schedule, there was a much lower hiring rate. And so what we would do is we would hire people in at that lower hiring rate regardless of their experience level. And then after a probationary period, we would give them a 5% increase. Well, in order to be more competitive with talent these days, we, um, started considering people's experiences, we made job offers, right? And we really wanted to get away from that, you know, 5% automatic after the end of the six months and rather bring them in at the minimum of the range. And then we weren't having so much, you know, jumping.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So that's the main difference is that we adjusted the minimum and then we, um, we made sure that we had, you know, an even spread between all those grades.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like too, and I appreciate your detail, that you have met, or the staff, I mean, you, you've got, you had a nice outline here of what you're doing and I guess really after tonight, this is it, right?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I appreciate the participation I've gotten with my fellow directors and talking through and auditing the data that we had. Um, I also appreciate all of our supervisors participating in the training that we had. We had some really good discussion. We had three days of meetings so that we could get all of our different shifts through with our supervisory staff, um, had some good questions during those sessions, have had some great follow-up questions as well, so.
Good. Good. Well, I appreciate your time and effort. I know this was a huge undertaking and I think it will help us in the future with our hiring and as we all know, I mean, that's what makes our city great is these employees.
Oh, that's definitely the case. Um, I think this positions us well, um, to compete against neighboring municipalities, um, with the salaries we're offering. Um, one of the things that we'll be mailing to our employees is in addition to, they'll get a letter that will say, you were here and now you're here, right? And then the second page goes into, um, the value of total rewards at the city, right? So it will show them, you know, you're getting your base salary and then your longevity, but in addition to that, the, um, amount that we fund for benefits on our employees' behalf is just unheard of. So we're going to actually give them a statement that will show the value of those rewards.
My employer did that one year and you, you don't think about that, uh, on a yearly basis?
Right.
Until it's put on paper?
Right.
And I think that has, it's very impactful.
Yeah.
For the employee to see that in numbers because you don't realize.
Right.
What your employee is providing you.
Right. It's, it's tremendous value and the city does a great job on the benefit side.
Well, I wanted to bring it out because I do think it is such an important thing.
Sure.
I know it was in the consent agenda, but, um, this impacts every, every person.
It does.
So.
And in a positive way, and I appreciate the support of council.
Two, two follow-ups on that.
Mm-hmm.
And even though we've got this process and everybody's going to get this adjustment.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, how often do we do our performance appraisals for individuals?
So we're going to get back on an annual basis with those appraisals. And actually, we want to really get into a place where we're doing ongoing performance feedback, so there are no surprises.
Very good.
When you actually get, and, um, we are going to be using a software tool called NeoGo and we've actually begun the first, um, implementation effort of that. We're starting with the applicant tracking piece, but the second piece we'll focus on is implementing the performance feedback tool. And so our supervisors and hopefully other employees will be able to provide, um, feedback to each other through the phones, through their phones. It will be an app on their phone and they can put comments in and then all that can be brought into a database when they put their performance appraisal tool together.
Number one. Number two, second follow-up is about the actual schedule.
Yes.
Um, and this may not be addressed to you, but may be addressed to Jake and it may not be addressed to Jake, it may be addressed to our interim to the left there. So the state treasurer, um, sends out those nasty le, look at her, she knows what I'm about to talk about.
Right, Sarah.
The state treasurer sends out those nasty letters to local governments, um, when they make these increases and spike, isn't that what they call it? Spiking.
Pinch and spiking.
Pinch and spiking. Um, have we been very careful about that within the, within these amounts or can you, feel like you can address that? Because I know, I know some folks who have gotten those letters and Jake's saying, oh no, she, I had no idea she was going to say this, but she knew exactly what I was talking about.
My understanding, the last time I looked at that, was a bigger push-up than what we've got going on here.
Okay.
Um, but I will take another look at it with that.
Thank you very much. I just think that it's something that we do not need to let, uh, slide by because of what the impact that it may or may not have. Thank you very much.
And, and to clarify, we are gonna, a third of our employees.
Mm-hmm.
Each year, we're gonna evaluate, look to make sure that we stay so we don't get behind.
Yes, ma'am. Um, in this next year, we're actually going to be looking at career development opportunities. A lot of municipalities are putting together incentives for that and I want to make sure that we're consistent across the city. Um, and then in the following year, we will do our first third and we haven't yet decided how we're going to, um, do the thirds, but we want to make sure that it's fair equitably and across our departments.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Further comments, questions, council? I'll entertain a motion.
Move, so move.
Motion to approve, resolution approving our updated salary schedule by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to unfinished business, consider appointments to the boards and commissions. Counsel, in your agenda, you have numerous, uh, applications to consider.
I'd like to.
Also, in addition to what's in the agenda packet, I placed another application in front of each council member's desk for consideration for planning.
Starting with HRC on the top, I'd like to place in the name of Billy Mills for one of those two seats. And if you want to take them individually, that's fine, your honor, if you want to do them that way.
Counsel, what's your preference? Anyone have another recommendation? Not, I'll entertain the first motion, Billy Mills for Historic Resources Commission. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Do we have a second one for the HRC?
I have just a question. Um, I noticed, um, two of the applicants that, um, there was, uh, the board or the staff had, I guess, had a preliminary meeting with the individual. And I noticed on one of the individuals, there wasn't that attached, so I'm gathering, I guess my question is, how did that come about? Did the applicant make that request or, or what?
Mr. Robinson?
Um, so.
Come on up, please.
Thank you, Mayor Michael. Um, a few of those applicants, we did have the, the opportunity to speak with, they had expressed interest to us and we had the opportunity to set up that meeting. Um, the third applicant, um, one of, our, our board chair actually recommended them to that board and to my knowledge, we did not have the opportunity to meet with them. So two of those, we have had meetings and put our recommendations in a letter format for you all. Um, one of them, we have not been able to have that meeting to gauge their interest, but that is something that we would like to do and have tried to start to do for every candidate moving forward because we're really trying to appoint people on these boards[1720.38] who actually are interested in these topics.
And understand what the expectation is to serve on the board.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, have a nomination for the second position on HRC.
Ms. Hughes, did you have one of these that you had spoken with?
Uh, I had, um, but this individual has not been, I mean, there's no, the board has heard the, they have not spoken to him personally, so, but yes, I.
But have you spoken to her?
Yes. So I would like to nominate, um, Mr. Green to serve on the HRC.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hughes to nominate Casey Green to the HRC.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Let's move on to.
Question.
Yes, sir.
The other applications that are in here, do we retain those active or?
Keep them.
I mean, the next time.
Yes, 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 we keep them. All right, let's move to the Planning and Zoning Board, a third alternate seat.
I'd like to nom- Marcus, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Marcus Owens to the position of third alternate, Planning and Zoning.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to nominate Marcus Owens to the third alternate position on the Planning and Zoning. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We also have a vacancy in the Central Elementary Seat, but I, we will have to look. I'm not sure we have anybody that lives within that district.
I don't think so. And I think that we, and I'm glad folks continue to come to us or that live in that district and have expressed an interest. I think that's a biggie too.
Counsel, we will consider a look and maybe next meeting we'll find someone to do the Central Elementary position for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Moving into new business, consider setting a public hearing for voluntary annexation of 54.237 acres off of Leonard Avenue.
So move to set it for, are we looking at doing it on August or is that not up time? It is August 2nd?
Motion by Councilmember Hall to set the public hearing for August the 2nd. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 31, Public Housing Burn Units Reconstruction Renovations. There he is. You want to come up and make a comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. Back in October of 2020, there was a fire in the unit at Amherst Gardens, which was started by a seven-year-old. Um, this was a tragic event that created significant damage to four units on the property. Thankfully, there were no injuries at that time. Immediately after the incident, city staff, including public housing staff, administration, risk management and fire kind of worked to coordinate and resolve some issues that were in place. We actually met with the families, got them taking care of them, got some new housing for them, notified the insurance company. We received estimates for procurement of services for demolition and abatement services. HUD was notified of the casualty loss and so forth. We already had a contract for architectural and construction management services, so we didn't have to go out for that. So Stargner Architects were contacted and commissioned to create some drawings for what needed to be done in these units. So back in April, May, we received these drawings, staff reviewed them, um, and we sent out a bid process for the services of the renovations and reconstructions of the units. The project was advertised in Stanley News &amp; Press. It was advertised in Planning Rooms. And obviously, actually 16 general contractors were contacted directly by Stargner to bid on the property, a bid on the project. We had the bid opening or the bid date set for June 16th, and unfortunately, we only received two bids. At that point in time, because of city policy, we had to go back out to rebid, which was done. And a new rebid was set out in June and we had a bid opening on June 30th. At that point in time, we had three contractors bid on the property. In your packet, you will see the certified bid tabulations and the results of the bid constructions. And I would like to say, at the time of the fire, shortly after, the estimates that were given to me as far as what we were looking at was about $550,000. This was back in October. So when the bids came in, we were expecting those numbers to go up because of the cost of lumber and materials. But as you can see from the bid tabulations, that the low bid that was received by DWA came in at $552,500. So staff has reviewed the bid, the bid package that it received, so has Stargner's. And we are here today to make a recommendation, and this is a recommendation of Stargner and you have the recommendation letter in your packet and of staff that we award this project to DWA going forward.
And you're saying to not accept alternate one or two?
We're not accepting all of them because of the prices. We now can get more than we were looking for by not accepting the two alternates. Yes.
Questions?
I have a question. It's not good, kind of silly question. Insurance is taking care of this. I mean, this is, insurance is taking care of the cost.
Immediately after insurance company was contacted, insurance has not made, they will not make any, let us know about any payments until the bids, we receive the bids. But also the contractor has to give an itemized breakdown of the bid because some of the work that's going to be done, work is being done to all four damages. Now, one, one unit was totally gutted out, demolished. There was other fire damage to the other, but two sustained smoke and water damage as a result. The insurance is not going to cover all the costs of it. So how much? We don't know yet.
Will they review these bids?
Absolutely. We've already, I've already sent them.
So if we approve it, they still have to.
To decide what they're, to decide how much they're paying, right?
Right. We don't know how much. I, the way that I've worked with insurance companies before, once we kind of get what they are going to pay, we have a right to go back and say, no, we need to look at this. Because they are not going to, like the painting of two of the units, we know they're not going to cover that. But that still has to be done because these are vacant units, we had to displace residents, that has to be done. So that's why they're asking for an itemized bid, breakdown of the bid.
I was just curious where they fell in this process.
Yep.
And you have reserve funds for anything that they don't cover?
Right. We have capital funds, we have operation funds, and then we're counting on the insurance proceeds also.
Further question?
Low bid from DWA.
Ms. Dry, you got another question?
What's our deductible?
That, I haven't got that information because the deductible will have to be paid by the resident that, whose child caused the damage, that will be put on her bill.
Have a motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the low bid of DWA for $552,500. Have a second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Your Honor, Wally is up here, might I ask him a question from his report? I had it highlighted. So on May 26th, you had a Amherst Gardens, um, public hearing, you had a public hearing on at Amherst Gardens in May.
Correct.
Just in your report. Four, four staff were present, but nobody else. Is that normal?
No. Well, it's not uncommon. And we'd already met the day before, had already met with the resident council, the resident advisory board. So we had eight people attend that meeting.
Okay.
They're not required to come back the next day for the actual public hearing.
Right.
But we're required to go, present it to the resident council, get what their comments are, and then still have the public hearing, which is advertised to anyone in the public.
Okay.
No one showed up.
And just when I saw that, even though I saw the resident council was the day before, I wasn't sure that was the same area.
Quick question, Wally, Wally, there. How close are they on completing the door project?
Everything has been done. All the work has been done regarding the doors except for four units. So the doors that we received for these four units didn't fit, so we've had to send them back.
These are not the burn units. These are four.
No, these are four separate units. We actually got credit for the burn units, so we got a credit that came in that final project. So all the work that was required, the flooring, the framing, everything has been done, just waiting on these eight doors to come in for installation.
Thank you. And have you gotten a notification as to when the, getting the visit?
Nope. No notification, nope.
But you're waiting.
We're waiting. We, we know we're on the list.
You're ready.
We're on the list and we're getting ready.
You're ready.
Thank you. Number 33, consider request from NC DOT to accept Mayberry Drive and a portion of Kingsley Drive for city maintenance. In your agenda, let's talk about Kingsley first. You say there's about a 500-foot section there that is DOT and the rest on each end is city. I think it makes logical sense for us to accept that if council's in agreement. Uh, second is Mayberry Drive. Mayberry Drive, if you remember, is where quality closures has come in. That road is in pretty bad shape and it is actually DOT's. Now, they are offering to pave it, bring it up to standard and are asking us to take it over. That will be council's decision whether you wish to take it over or not.
What's the benefit? I can't see from the, from the notes, from the, from the information in the agenda, any positive thing for us to have. I really can't. Now, the Kingsley, I agree with because of either end, but that Mayberry, I really don't see. I mean, yeah, they're going to bring it up to speed, then they want to give it to us. Well, they got to bring it up to speed whether they give it to us or not, okay? So I don't really, knowing where it is, I don't see the benefit for us having it.
They've been working with Mr. Paris, so let me make him, have him make a comment on that.
Sure. Um, so there's some, now, there's some changes and depending on your point of view, they could be benefits or not. There would be, uh, you know, a small amount of power, but we'd be inheriting a road that's in good shape. Uh, there'd be a small amount of power bill. Now, a lot of times DOT, because we're extending our, our acceptance of Kingsley, Mayberry comes into Kingsley. So it would connect to our street. That's not a rule, that's not a law, but that makes things cleaner at times, that they don't have a street deadening into one of ours. It was constructed years ago, when that building was constructed, there was some state money that allowed that road to be built. That company that is going in there right now is one that, you know, our economic development program recruited. It is a very short street and so we've been working pretty heavily with the DOT to try to get them to maintain the road in better condition. And so we're trying to meet them halfway. They've been fairly, they've been good to deal with. They're going to patch by holes and then at some point resurface the entire length. They've asked if we'd accept it. Um, you know, the calls for the maintenance do come into our economic development office because that's who the business has been dealing with. That doesn't mean we have to take the road over. But that's sort of the history of what's been going on with Mayberry and why that proposal's being made by the DOT.
So they're going to completely resurface Mayberry Drive?
That's correct.
And then give it to us? Or give it to us, then do it?
Yeah, that's, that has been our, the standard operating procedure. It's been a while since, I can't even think what the last one was that we accepted from DOT, but we've accepted a few from time to time and that's basically been the standard condition, is that they, they get it into a new road condition and then we'll accept it from there.
And there, and now I see your last line is in early '22, so, I mean, that, it won't be.
But my question is, why wouldn't we take it? I mean, if they're trying to, if they're going to repair the road and offer to give it to us?
You have to decide whether it's to your benefit or not. You'll get some power bill funds, but I don't think it'd be enough to cover it. But you have to have to decide whether you want the road or not. That's totally a council decision.
But it, I mean, it basically is a short road. It deadends into Kingsley where we are. It probably will never have more than one or two businesses on it.
Right. Right now, it almost serves as a drive for that business, but it, there is land that is at the dead end that could develop at one point. It does adjoin the property, uh, I guess it's the ladder property on the right-hand side, may not be the primary access, but it does adjoin that. So there was the possibility of them giving it to us and then we could accept it and then turn it over and abandon it, but that would create a landlocked situation further down the road. So if it just relates to the one business that's there now, that would probably be fine, but we have to think about the future as well. So it needs to stay open as a public right-of-way and that's just the decision whether, you know, we want to accept it or just keep it with DOT.
Counsel, what's your wishes?
It just does look cleaner at that. What was the, I think it does look cleaner. There's little pieces of DOT road stuck there.
Move approval to consider request from NC DOT to accept both Mayberry Drive and a portion of Kingsley.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to accept both.
Sorry.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Let me just add, it's in my notes, but just let me reiterate that the formal acceptance won't come until the NC DOT makes improvements to Mayberry, which will probably be in the late winter, early spring. But we're giving our commitment that when that does happen, we'll accept.
Okay. Number 34, discussion of air packs.
Mayor, counsel, giving you a brief history of the air packs. FEMA, we were awarded a FEMA grant back in 2019. That, that grant allowed us the opportunity to purchase 45 air pack ensembles. With those 45, uh, the air packs were delivered late December, uh, 20, uh, in 2020, training occurred for us to put them in service first part of 2021. Now, with the air packs in service, no different than any tool that we have, we're experiencing some issues. Uh, those issues are being worked through. Uh, we have been in contact with the vendor as well as the manufacturer. The vendor as well as the manufacturer, I have met with both and they are working diligently to resolve these issues. So right now, what we're looking at is basically where we are, how we move forward and again, getting over this, getting over this, this bump in the road. I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Um, yes, so we got them in late December and they were in service in January 2021.
Yes.
January. And five, six months later, we're having problems with them. When did the problems actually start?
Define what problems you're talking about.
Well, whatever problems are keeping them from being utilized right now.
What are, what are the problems?
Yeah, you might need to talk about what the issues are.
Well, currently, air packs are in service.
All of, all the current ones? The ones that we have of our own?
They are in service. We do have some that were sent back for additional testing. Uh, the low alarm indicator, the whistle, that allows opportunity for, uh, for you to know when your low air, uh, has reached its mark, its benchmark. It is, it, in a couple of them, we will tell you, they malfunction. Uh, our staff threw great opportunities of inspection, uh, changing out different things. They, they recognized it, identified it. At their level, they, they moved forward. Once they could not get a resolve at their level, then they escalated it on up to my level. That is when I contacted, again, the vendor and the manufacturer. And at that point, we moved forward with, we're getting things resolved. So to answer your question, the biggest issue we're having right now is actually working with the low pressure alarm. Counsel Dry, your question again, I'm sorry.
That, I was just wondering what specifically, what was the problem or the problem?
Okay.
So out of the 45 units that we purchased, how many of them got sent back?
The 45 that were purchased, we identified 25 of the 45 of having issues with the low pressure alarm. Again, that came through inspecting, identifying, wearing, uh, putting them through basically a wear test. So 25 of the 45 were found to be, to have some type of malfunction. At that time, the vendor came in, uh, did the assessment, uh, identified some of the issues that could be corrected at that moment. They worked on it. Uh, the, uh, sales rep, the regional sales rep has been back, uh, as a matter of fact, was here last Wednesday, uh, working on, working on the air packs. Uh, and when I say air packs, self-contained breathing apparatus, getting those issues resolved. Uh, they are still in the, in the fact-finding mode. Again, with any piece of a new equipment, we're going to have, we're going to have some issues. These unfortunately were issues that we can't resolve and it has to go back to someone who has greater training than we do.
Is it mostly the equipment being defective?
There is, uh, equipment deficiencies as well as, there were some training issues. Uh, we were trained to a level where we were confident. That does not mean that we were given all the information upfront dealing with training. So what we knew about, we asked about. What we didn't know about, we knew nothing about. Does, does that answer your question on that?
But we know about it now and we're fixing that, which we didn't know about. The training that we did not know about, you're saying we know about it now.
What I'm saying is that the training that was issued was not thorough and it was identified by not only the vendor, but the, the manufacturer, the representative. So they are assisting us in moving forward with better training.
So you know it now. You know the better training now.
What we didn't know, we know now.
That's what I asked. Thank you.
So, so, gee, first of all, thanks for all the information.
So, gee, first of all, thanks for all the information. I think the company that we, that got the lowest bid that we went with, I think they're pretty much world renowned and they're going all over the place. Are any other fire departments or municipalities experiencing any kind? Or did we, did we just get a bad batch? Or does this, does this happen frequently?
I'd like to be able to give you the best possible answer. And with that, the vendor, not the vendor, but the manufacturer, the representative from Interspiral, and they came in and said that they had not seen this issue, that it was an isolated issue. So it being a isolated issue, that brought them into a heavier thought process to find out a resolve, to find out exactly what's going on, why these things are occurring, what issues we are having, what are some of the things we asked for versus what are some of the things that the, that the units would deliver? So that is the best, the best answer I can give you on that. I hope that was sufficient enough.
Thank you.
I guess my last one is, when did we first, first notice that the whistles weren't working? About when?
All right, late May, early June. And what I will tell you is that, and most of you will understand, one, the chain of command, number two, levels of authority. City manager gives me a level of authority to handle things at, at the level in which I can. I also deliver the same respect to the firefighters that work on the air packs, that work on any piece of equipment that we have. And I, and I ask them to handle things at their level before they escalate it to me. Once they escalated to me, conversation is low because I need to find out what, why, and how. Because now I have to report up to my chain of command, which is the city manager. So they handled as much as they possibly could and when they found out what was going on in order to give me best case information at their level for me to handle at my level, which was June. In June, when I found out about it, I emailed the, not only the rep, but I seized, I copied the, the level vendor on that. Also, at that point, to go back to your email, I notified the city attorney unofficially. I let her know that this is an issue that we're having. I want to let you know just, just so that in the future, when this occurs or when you hear about it, you're not caught blindsided. No different than the city manager. But I had to handle it at my level in order before, in order for me to escalate it up the level. So that way, every system was in place. Just in case something happens, the first question is going to be asked, what level of authority was handled and delivered? So in order to protect you, us, and everybody else, we handled it at the levels of authority that were delivered.
So the last question that I'll ask is, so the reason we got this is for protection and safety of our firefighters, okay? And as I have heard you articulate, we got them in January, we got them in December, we were trained with them in January, and we did not experience the first bad whistles, if you will, until May. Is that right?
That's to my knowledge, again.
But you are the chief and ultimately it falls your knowledge. You shouldn't, I mean, ultimately, that's when you, you should know that.
Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention because, yes ma'am, I am ultimately responsible for what goes on in that department. And therefore, I have to make sure that every person, every soul in that department meets the, meets the level of safety and standard that I would want for you or anyone else. So with that being said, the level of authority that was given to them that to be able to handle it at their level, I allow for that. Once it was escalated up and everything came to me, regardless of when it was, I moved it to a level to where I had to act and react based on what was given and then move it up from there.
Further questions, comments?
So ultimately, this is going to get resolved, right? And we're going to have good, workable, dependable air pack?
Yes, counsel. That, that is, that is the direction in which is, in which is going.
And what's the timeframe on getting the repairs so that they're 100% for our personnel?
Excellent question. The answer to that is, I also asked the same question. Unfortunately, the, the parts that are needed are actually overseas. Due to, due to COVID and other, other issues, no different than anything else, parts are delayed. So with that, not only has the, the vendor and the rep worked on the air packs to get them to a level that, that the team can wear and wear it right now at a level of confidence that they're okay, they also have to go back to the buddy system. Look out for each other within, within an IDLH atmosphere.
Further comments, questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Number 35, consider a street closure for Sugar Hill Reunion. Counsel, we'll see your paperwork. This is an unusual request and doesn't typically meet our policy. What is counsel want to do?
Mayor, if I will, this, this same request was approved last year.
It came to us last year.
Yeah, we as a council approved the same request last year. They're, they're actually not, I guess, a former HOA or nonprofit organization, but what it is, is a group of current and former residents of that community that come, come from all over, you know, out of state and all around North Carolina. And last year, I did happen to attend that event and it was a great turnout. No problems whatsoever. You know, people came from Minnesota and Maryland and DC and sub to attend this event and it's well organized, you know.
Was it a three-day event last year too?
It was a three-day event, but it's, it's formatted in a manner where it's not impeding traffic. The way they block the roads and stuff off, people can still get to and from, even from East Main, they block it off right there, Adelaide Street, and they can go up to South Cotton and come around toward Armfield.
So if an emergency vehicle needed to get through, they can?
They still got access.
And the dates are not as are on the original application? Then 6/7/8, right?
Yeah, I think 6/7/8, yeah. I think he done something like that last year. But I think going forward, if, if this is going to be a regular thing, I'll work with the organizers and see if they can form like a Sugar Hill reunion or HOA or something. I move approval.
I'll second.
Clarify your motion, just to approve the closing of the street? Are you closing the, the wave in at the fee too?
I'll close it.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the request of Sugar Hill Reunion to close the street and waive the fee?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. Going around the table, Mr. Ferris?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
Just two things. First, I want to thank Public Housing for their staff for participating in what we call a like father, like son kickball event that occurred on Father's Day weekend. It was a lot of kids out there and great participation from the Public Housing staff. I just want to thank them for participating in that. And last thing I want to mention is, I don't know what we as a city can do, but when you come out from Lowe's over there near the Bird Road side, somebody have turned that, right there before you turn on the Bird Road on the left in that wood, near that wooded section, somebody have turned that into a complete dump ground. You know, I mean, it's piles and piles of clothes and containers and mattresses and things of that nature. You know, and it, I don't, I just noticed it early part of last week. And I, you know, I know that's not our property and, but again, it's still, just with people patronizing our retail establishments, it looked terrible, you know? I don't know what we can do about it.
That, those Lowe's aren't...
Lowe's have cut off the entrance to, you know, that side of the building because they in the process of establishing a tool rental. But people still come from the backside. And I, I've known, and I'm quite sure many of you do, known for some years that it's one or two people that probably sleep in that wooded section right there. They've been doing it for years, but again, still, that, that still don't explain why over the last week or two, it's been such an increase in trash and debris. Just looked like somebody using it as a dumping ground.
Does, I mean, is it enough that somebody, that it looks like somebody's, you know, backing in a truck?
Yes.
And actually, okay, not just litter?
It's not litter, it's somebody unloading.
Okay.
Staff will take care of checking in there.
We'll find out.
I just have one comment. And I think Councilmember Townsend has brought this up before. When it rains at the corner of Leonard and East Main, and that's when they repaved, when they redid that repaving, and there is a drain, there's, you can see it, but that puddle is huge. And it is, it's dangerous. And I know we've talked about this before, but last week when we got all that rain, it was... So I don't know who, who can fix that?
Mr. Ferris has worked with DOT and they did send a crew out there to do some work. I don't think it's going to be improved until DOT eventually goes in and replaces all the pipe and the gutters and the culverts in that area.
That's a big puddle.
Yeah, it's, West Main is, I'm sorry, East Main, Olive Main is theirs, either side. And we've even offered our sewer jet in case it was something where they didn't have the equipment large enough to clear it out. They've, I think we've tried, I don't know, there, other locations for them, but I think, as the mayor said, they've come to the conclusion that that's really not going to be improved until they dig up the road and replace the pipe. And they have a few locations like that on Main.
That's been an issue for many, many years. It floods as far down as our...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
And it is, it is dangerous. And, you know, I don't know where, where the water's supposed to go, but the good Lord puts it packed up in the sky at some point. It goes nowhere else at that point.
I think the way they got the funding, they got it late and they got just enough time within their fiscal year to get it spent. And I pointed out the drainage issues because there were drainage issues there before. And I think they came down to the point where they didn't have enough funds or time to address everything that needed to be done. So they just decided, and I don't, that's like, well, at least let's get a better traveling road out of it when it's not standing water on it.
When it's not standing in water.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that, that's all.
Mr. Aldridge?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Howell?
July 29th, there will be 25 more occupational therapy students down at Pfeiffer. They have a possibility of having 35 and they are guaranteed right now 25 that are going to be down there. There will be, my understanding is 40 more in January, they will be PA students. So, you know, we're coming along down there, big time. There's another dumping ground that I noticed and I should have called in because I've been calling in lately stuff regularly. I can't tell you the road. What's the road that comes, it ends in 73, right there at the old egg plant at Louder's? Rocky?
Rock Springs.
What is it, Rock Springs? In that curve still, where the straightaway, bottom of the hill, there looks like somebody is, there's all kinds of tires down there now. That's a new one. But that's just the regular down in that corner.
Ross, why you, why she's mentioning that?
Sorry.
There's also several potholes on Rock Springs and on West Cassett back up to Pennington Road. You need to look at those outside.
Yeah, there sure is. Just a thanks to all that came out this past week. And we'll have our, we'll have a meeting before the next Food Truck Friday, which is on the 6th, 6th of August. And Motown Review will be there that night. So we expect a great crowd that night. So that will be great. And a thanks to the few, but we had some officers that were in Oakboro for the 4th of July. I think we had a couple out there throughout the event. There were a lot of people out there during this five, four or five days. So I think that's it.
Ms. Bruton?
There's a couple of things. Kudos Parks and Rec. I went out Friday night to the City Lake and that was a really enjoyable event. It's the kind of event you would see lots of other places. I look forward to going back to that. Also, kudos Public Utilities, the Electric Division. Sent Michael an email the other day. I was sitting home one day last week and the power just goes off. And then I hear the explosion. So transformer somewhere. So I started looking at my watch. There was a truck there, probably in less than 10 minutes. And 40 minutes or so later, the power was back on, 40 or 45 minutes. So I sent him an email and I said, that wouldn't happen with deep power. I'm sorry to say, but, you know, so those guys were on the ball and out there. The other thing is, I probably should have asked about this. Do they have any, Bill Tanning Salon with the Creek? Is that moving forward or is still, is there something?
You, you an answer to that, that maybe came?
Sure. So we've got two phases basically to look at in the property we own. One is happening shortly, where actually some work has happened, which is development of a parking lot in the existing space. Because we know with the, we had to identify the floodway through that property. It had never been identified. So we actually identified through the entire block, which also helps other property owners, should they ever want to do anything. But we identified that because we also knew that wherever that was, there was an existing parking lot there. So going back like for like can be done a lot quicker and easier. So we want to get that parking lot done. We also have LKC designing that parking lot, but also what it would look like and what parking spots could be gained if we took down the Tanning Salon building. So there's a cost in that, we need to know how many spaces we get. Also, there has to be probably no ride certificate potentially and other things done. So what we're doing now is doing what we know we can do instead of trying to do everything at once and delaying something we can finish at this point. So we're going to be coming back to counsel with, you know, potential uses for the building, but also potential costs for removing the building, you know, hurdles, timelines, and, and, you know, how many spaces we're going to be able to get out of that depending on what portion of that property we're going to be able to construct the parking lot on. That way counsel can make a solid decision. Do we want to move forward with the building? Is it worth, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze? So they say, so they say, you know, the cost benefit analysis or is there something, is there a plan to regroup a wonder, something different? It may not change anything. I want counsel to know when we get to that phase, what it's costing us and what we have to be involved with.
Because I guess my question was, because we approved the budget tonight for the paving of that.
Right.
The, is the design going to be, if the building were to come down, will that be able to be incorporated?
Yes.
Is it going to look like two points?
Yes, that, they're, they're drafting design that will incorporate the thought of where the buildings are now and making that into one cohesive parking lot. There could be some, you know, parking dividers between the two, but you will be able to access it as if it's one parking lot in some fashion. So we can maximize spaces if we choose to move forward with removal of those buildings.
Mr. Dry?
Two old things. You may recall back in 2016, the Corps of Engineers from, the Air National Guard was going to come out to the, our property on 24/27. I spoke with Michael a few weeks ago. I contacted General Stone Street. He provided me a name of the people that are out there now. Wants to say to Keith, thank you. He's made contact with these folks and hopefully we'll get some additional information and we can see this project come back online and get that property, get it going where we need it to have it and bring it down as close to street level as we can. The other thing is, back in February, the mayor and I met with the family of, the Jordan family on the two buildings beside of the Tanning Salon. I did speak with Jack about a month ago. He asked me, you know, to hang on for another month and until he got things squared away with his finances and his accountant. So hopefully we'll have something back on that relatively soon.
Counsel, I need to go back to our rezoning, number six on the Northeast Connector property. And Ms. Birch has asked that we clarify our motion as to why we have denied that request for rezoning. Ms. Howell, you made the motion. Would you do a clarification and let's make sure we get it in the record?
Is there a land use issue with that also?
Well, there's an inconsistency statement in there. I don't know if you can say that the land use map is not consistent with it because everything that we've seen is that it is.
Okay.
But there would have to be some other reason given and that would have to be included in your inconsistency statement. I think there's some, some terminology in that statement that you could.
So you just need to approve the inconsistency?
Now, there's, as I understand it, there's gotta be a finding in there. And my, just based on what I heard tonight, based on the information that was testimony, I just, I did not want to, I did not want to approve it based on what eight does to 10 or 10 does to eight. And I, I mean, I know that it, that by, by what is here with the consistency and the inconsistency and the future land map amendment, I see what they have to say, okay? And it's not inconsistent. I mean, it's consistent, the move would be. I just, based on what I heard, based on the size of the lots and the number, I mean, I just could not see, I mean, even one of them's testimony was, is that it might be that there would be the same number of houses if it were changed or not. The lots might just be different sizes. And again, that got into something I didn't even want to hear. I thought we were getting into, definitely into the weeds there and I wanted to stay back out. So it got real, it just got nasty for me. But based on what we should have been hearing, I had no, I just, it was a, just because of the size of lots. So if you're wanting a finding, I don't have a finding, okay? And I put it out there to see what somebody else would agree with or not, and we had a vote. So it appears to me that we had four of us that felt the same way. So I, I'm not sure exactly how we need to do that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get a rehearing on you. I just wanted, just legally for that statement, it's, it's really just to cover counsel, so.
Well, I understand that.
You know? Is it possible, I mean?
Public interest or reason, there's, there's.
Well, it is public interest. I mean, there was public interest expressed.
Yeah, and so it sounds like counsel feels like, you know, if counsel feels like it's inconsistent, that maybe, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, just want to see if this is what you're saying, or what I've heard Mayor Portem Hall says, that, you know, the going, we're given that everything around it is R10 and you're creating a higher density, that that's inconsistent with the existing surrounding area and that there's still a potential to have full developable use of the property if it remains.
In R10.
Because, and they still have a viable use.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I don't know how to put that in sort of a consistency statement, but is that, is that where counsel's coming from?
You can get the same, you can get the same out of it without the density. I mean, there's, I like it at R10 and we don't have to change it. I mean, but yeah, I mean.
That's, I could, yes, I concur with you.
Ms. Birch?
And it is. I mean, that is exactly right. If you look around, if you look at every piece of property around it, on, I mean, whoever did the rezoning exhibit, it's got R10s everywhere.
Yeah, I think the important part is to be on the record with stating that.
And.
And I apologize if we didn't cover that before. It just kind of moved kind of quick and we, we didn't get to, we just forgot to bring that back up.
Well, when it got into the weeds of the plan, I wanted to bring us back out of that, back to where we needed to be and.
Will you make us an inconsistency statement, motion?
What you did with what she just did?
Have the minutes from the planning that's on board been set out where that vote was, what, five to two or something?
But they haven't gone out yet, just last week, last third day.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, Ronnie?
You want to make us a motion on the inconsistency thing? Since you made the original.
It's the same one.
Consistent with the.
Well, that is, yeah, that is not inconsistent with the current R10 district.
Neighboring, neighboring tracks.
I mean, it's not. I mean, it's just right there all, we would be doing R8 in the middle of everything.
Right.
So I can't make that in a short motion. I'm just telling you, it's a sort of, if anybody can narrow that down, there's a lot of verbiage there. But it is with, I guess I would move that we deny the request based on the, the neighboring parcels being R10. If that's short enough. Now, I don't know who seconded it, Mayor.
The man that, that it's inconsistent with the neighboring properties of R10. Is that correct?
That's what I just.
Ms. Birch?
Yeah.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion.
You took a.
It's four, two?
Hand vote earlier.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, same vote?
Same vote, four, two.
Thank you. Sorry to have been such a problem, but glad somebody called it, but.
Again, we, we forgot the, we should have mentioned that.
Same vote. Chris and Dexter with a no.
All right, moving into 36, closed session, perpetuated North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, three, five, and six, legal personnel and real estate. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. By Councilmember Aldridge, that we go back into regular session?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Did you get that, Cindy?
Yeah.
I'm gonna wait one second, see if the other, other one comes in. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. I have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge that we adjourn to our next meeting on August the 2nd, 6:30 PM. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.